Commissioner Chafe?
Here.
Commissioner Dram?
Here.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Here.
Commissioner Simons?
Here.
Commissioner Zepko?
Present.
Vice Chair Mendez?
Here.
And Chair Keller?
Here.
All seven commissioners are present.
Thank you, and if you could read the commission matters for the resolution declaring the continued remote needs.
Yes, thank you. I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the newly enacted California Assembly Bill 361. The city was previously complying with the Brown Act orders issued by the governor, which were aimed at containing the novel coronavirus, sorry, and which expired on September 30th. This new bill gives local agencies the authority to continue to host virtual meetings until January 1st, 2024, as long as California is under a governor-declared state of emergency. In order to continue meetings subject to this exemption to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission must make findings by majority vote no later than 30 days after it starts using the exemption, and every 30 days thereafter, and will do so at this meeting and until the governor lifts the state of emergency. City Hall is open to the public during regular business hours, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. The planning and building counters have different hours. Please check or make an appointment before visiting. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main city of Emeryville Planning Commission webpage and clicking on the link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, and they provide public comment during the meeting using the "Raise Your Hand" feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, as well as via e-notification and on social media. At this time, I would like to go to item 3.1, which is a resolution declaring the need for the Planning Commission to continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. The required findings are contained in this resolution. With your permission, Chair Keller, I would now like to ask for a motion and a vote on this resolution.
Thank you, and to move this along, I'll make the motion for the resolution approval. Can I have a second, please?
I'll say I have a second.
Commissioner Chafe?
All right, on the motion by Chair Keller, it's seconded by Commissioner Chafe. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Simons?
Aye.
Commissioner Zepko?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mendez?
Aye.
And Chair Keller?
Aye.
Seven ayes, the resolution is adopted. Thank you. Would you like me to explain the next item, Chair Keller? That would be great, thank you. All right, this is appointments to the Emeryville-Oakland Joint Planning Authority. I know several of you have inquired about what this is, so I did send an email a couple of days ago to you all explaining it. But for the benefit of the public, audience who may be watching, I will just summarize. This Joint Planning Authority was created in 1992 specifically for processing the entitlements for the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, which is that big shopping center along 40th Street with Pack and Save at one end and Target at the other end. And that straddles the Oakland-Emeryville border. This JPA consists of a Planning Council and an Appellate Council. The Planning Council is comprised of six members of the Emeryville Planning Commission and seven members of the Oakland Planning Commission. Then the Appellate Council is made up of four members of the Emeryville City Council and three members of the Oakland City Council. These bodies approved the shopping center in 1995 and the Bay Bridge Apartments along 40th Street in 1996. Since these approvals, the JPA has not had to be reconvened because there have been no major changes to the center. We handle the design review and building permits for minor modifications to the center at a staff level. However, the city clerk's roster of committees needs to be kept up to date, and since the membership of our Planning Commission changes periodically, we need to update the roster to reflect the current Planning Commission membership. We don't really expect the JPA to be meeting anytime soon, but it's important to keep the roster current. I sent you all a link to the current roster that's on the city's website, and you will notice that six of the seven commissioners that are listed in that roster are no longer on the commission. So needless to say, the roster needs to be updated. The question really before the commission, since it consists of six commissioners and one alternate, is basically who do you want to be the alternate? And then the other six would be the appointments to the council. So with that, I will leave it to you to let me know who you want to appoint, and I will convey that information to the city clerk.
Very good, thank you. And at this time, I'd like to just nominate myself as the alternate, and then the others can be in the committee. Are they all in agreement to that? Do we need a vote, Charlie, or can we just...
I think Ms. Crowell said we should have a vote because this is an appointment.
Yes, that'd be great, thank you.
So I guess we need a motion. Is that a motion, Chair Keller?
That's a motion.
Then we need a second.
I can second.
All right, on the motion by Chair Keller and seconded by Commissioner Zepko. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Simons?
Aye.
Commissioner Zepko?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mendez?
Aye.
And Chair Keller?
Aye.
Congratulations, Chair Keller, you are now the alternate.
Okay, before we move on to public comment, I just want to make a couple of statements. Number one is because tonight's meeting and agenda is so packed, I'm going to try to keep us on track so that we are not staying up too late tonight. With all due respect, everybody will get... Public comments will be limited to the three minutes, and we will ask people to hold to that. I'll also ask the commission if they can make their questions and comments as succinct as possible, but everyone will have the time they need to make the questions and remarks they'd like to make. But I will just be asking once if there are any comments, and then be moving on. So what I'm going to do is call on each commissioner as we go on, and if I forget, you know, just yell at me and say, "Hey, Dr. Brant," or something. And also, if the meeting tends to go late, we are supposed to end by 11:30, unless we take a vote to exceed past 11:30, and that would take a majority of the commission to vote for that. So about 11:15, if we are still progressing in the meeting, I will ask if we want to continue the meeting, meaning continue to end of date or continue it on tonight to finish up. So we'll have to see where we are on the agenda at that point. So with that, does anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay, so we'll move on to public comment. And you're going to read the script.
You want me to read this, yes. I'm sorry, now we're going to move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent calendar should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the commission secretary to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the "Raise Your Hand" feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press *9. At this time, I will ask myself whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments. And yes, we have one online speaker card, which I will read. This is from Lisa Findley. It says, "Not sure if this is the appropriate time to ask this, but I wanted to know what the city is doing about studying the cumulative traffic impacts of the various development proposals in the Powell-Christie-Schelmont Loop area. Is there an overall study? What is contemplated in terms of handling traffic so that all the new traffic does not create congestion, bicycle conflicts, and pedestrian dangers? This is a particular concern on Christie Avenue, past the Schelmont Light, where it narrows immediately to a two-lane-wide green street and Schelmont by the Public Market with its traffic calming and narrowing." Thank you. So that is that comment.
Very good, thank you.
Looking at the attendee list, I don't see any raised hands. And I'll just double-check my inbox to see if any other comment cards have been received. I've never received any further comments. So that is the end of public comment.
Very good, thank you. We'll close the public comment period at this time and move for the approval of the action minutes of our meeting of December 9th, 2021. Are there any corrections or adjustments that anyone saw that need to be made? If there aren't, I will entertain a motion in a second to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, second not.
Thank you.
All right, moved by Commissioner Chafe and seconded by Commissioner Simons. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Simons?
Aye.
Commissioner Zepko?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mendez?
Aye.
And Chair Keller?
Aye.
Seven ayes, the minutes are approved.
Thank you very much. And then once again, Mr. Dr. Brant, you are onstage to do the director's report.
All right, I won't talk much for the whole rest of the meeting, but now I have a few words to say. So first of all, with regard to recent city council actions, they have held two meetings since your last meeting. Your last meeting was on December 9th, and they've had a meeting on December 21st and January 18th. On December 21st, the council approved a contract with Seaful Consulting to provide analysis of the Marketplace Parcels A, B, and F project. As you may recall, as I previously reported, on November 2nd, the city council held a study session on the proposal at which Oxford Representative... that's the applicant representative, suggested a monetary contribution to the city's Affordable Housing Fund in lieu of constructing affordable units on the site. The council expressed openness to the suggestion and directed staff to discuss this concept further with Oxford. The contract with Seaful Consulting will assist staff in evaluating Oxford's proposal. As you may recall, the commission held a study session on this project on October 28th, and a second study session is tentatively scheduled for your March 24th meeting. The council unanimously approved a major conditional use permit and design review to demolish two existing uninhabitable residential structures at 127064th Street and replace them with two new residential structures. The project was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on October 28th. The council also unanimously approved a major conditional use permit and design review to demolish four existing units and construct four new units at 127164th Street, right across the street. This project was previously approved by the commission as an addition of a third floor to an existing four-unit residential building, but during construction, it was discovered that the existing building had been entirely demolished, which requires city council approval to demolish residential units upon the recommendation of the commission. The commission voted to recommend approval at your October 28th meeting. The city council's approval included conditions that prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the height of the building must be verified by the city engineer to ensure that it does not exceed 30 feet, and that the applicant pay five times the cost of permit fees in accordance with the city's master fee schedule, which requires such payments for construction work without permits. Finally, on December 21st, the council accepted the paid parking program as complete, approved the relocation of some meters on 67th Street, and approved a 15-minute parking zone on Adeline Street in front of Todd's Kitchen. On January 18th, the council held a study session to discuss possible future development options for the three city-owned parcels on the east side of Christie Avenue, south of Christie Park. The council agreed that affordable housing was appropriate on the site, either with or without market-based housing, and with some ownership housing if possible. For a non-residential component of the project, the council suggested an alternative transportation facility such as an electric bike and/or electric car rental business. The council also approved a contract with David Rosen Associates to assist staff in preparing a request for proposals for a developer, and a contract with PES Environmental to provide environmental consulting services to help determine the level of cleanup that may be required and to make recommendations about cleanup activities. The council heard a presentation about the draft environmental document for the proposed Ashby Interchange Project, which also includes a new pedestrian and bicycle bridge over the freeway, and they approved a letter of support to Caltrans, including comments on the draft environmental document. The council approved a future agenda item to consider directing staff to conduct a citywide tree survey. This would be a public works project, as a step towards enhancing the urban tree canopy. And finally, on January 18th, the council... Well, let me just preface this by saying, this is a good news and bad news item. First, the bad news, which is that we are losing our stellar interim city attorney, formerly Assistant City Attorney Andrea Vishaswara. She has taken a position with MTC in their general counsel's office. And so her last day with the city will be next Monday, January 31st, and the council is still looking for a permanent city attorney. So after Monday, the city attorney's office will be empty. So that's the bad news. The good news is the council approved a contract with Jarvis Fay for legal services for an interim city attorney, at least through the end of April, and that interim city attorney is none other than our own Christie Crowell. So the good news is that we get to keep Christie, and she will be serving not only the Planning Commission and the Community Development Department, but the entire city staff, as well as the city council, at least for the next three months, if not longer. So we're very pleased about that outcome. Christie, do you want to say anything?
Not much, thank you, Charlie. That's very kind. I have very big shoes to fill, but I look forward to continue working with staff and with all of you and the council for the next three months, and hoping to help you find a perfect permanent replacement, so.
That's great, and don't be surprised if it's more than three months, because even if we hire a new city attorney, we still need an assistant city attorney.
I'm here as long as the city needs me.
Great, we're very happy about that.
Congratulations on your new opportunity.
Thank you, very happy to be here. And like I said, I've so enjoyed working with staff and with all of you for the last, you know, six or eight months, and this has just been a real pleasure, and I look forward to continuing our relationship here, and you know, however long the city needs to continue it to.
I have one other item, not Chair Keller, not related to the city council. In other news, there is an upcoming community workshop on the housing element. This is workshop number two. It will be on Wednesday, February 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. More information about that will be forthcoming soon, including the Zoom link as how you can participate, which is not available yet. But for further information, you can go to the Emeryville homepage, and then in the search bar at the top of the page, just type "housing element" and click on the first item that comes up in the link, and that will take you in the list, rather, and that will take you to the Housing Element page, where there will be information about this upcoming workshop and lots more information about the Housing Element. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Very good, thank you, Charlie. Any questions? Commissioner Chafe?
Really quick question. Thanks, Charlie. On the contract that the city has now to evaluate the contribution to an affordable housing fund, is that something that the city pays for outright, or will that be recouped in some way in costs related to the contribution that's coming in?
I believe that will be billed to the cost recovery account for the project.
Thank you.
In other words, the applicant will pay for it.
Thank you, and Charlie, I just... Can you go back to that first item that you read about? Because I need to make sure I understand, because it may impact comments I have on an upcoming project.
You mean the Seaful Consulting item?
No, with the agreement that council had with Oxford on the apartments.
Yeah, on the marketplace.
Yeah. Right?
Well, they had a study session on November 2nd, and as you may recall, the project... According to the development agreement, the project requires 18 affordable units, and it also requires 10 townhouses, the PUD does. And the townhouses and the affordable units can be combined, so a total of 18, of which 10 are townhouses. The proposal that the applicant put forward was to put those 18 units all on parcel app across the street. This will require an amendment to the PUD and the development agreement. But as an alternative to that, the applicant offered instead to just give the city some money, a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund. And exactly how much that is, we do not know. And so staff needs to negotiate that with the applicant, and we've hired Seaful Consulting to assist us with those negotiations.
Okay. That's good, because that... Okay, I had something to say about that on the other project tonight, but that'll come later. I just wanted to make sure I was in line with what is happening. Thank you. Okay, so now we will move on to the disclosure of Exparte Communications and identifications of conflicts of interest. Commissioner Gitzoni, what do you have for tonight?
Yes, I will be recusing myself from item 8.2 because my primary residence is right across the street from that project, and my APN is 49-1035-50. And I will be recusing myself from item 9.3 since one of the parties to that item is a client of my employer's.
Very good, thank you. And Commissioner Mendez?
Yes, I will be recusing myself from item 9.1 because BMR, the owner of the project, is the source of income for my employer.
Very good, thank you. And Commissioner Chafe?
Exparte Communications, I met on January 24th, I believe, with two members of the Oxford Properties Group to discuss 9.3.
Thank you much. Commissioners, up, can you... Commissioner Dram? Commissioner Simons?
Nothing for me.
Okay, I haven't... Exparte Communications, I also met the two principals of Oxford and City Central Real Partners on the upcoming 9.2 item. Okay.
I just clarified, that's 9.3.
Right, thank you.
Yes, correct.
That's correct. So we can now move on to public hearings, item 8, and item 8.1 is duplex conversion.
And that is Annalisa's.
Welcome back, Annalisa.
Thank you. Okay, so here we have the duplex conversion at 129155th Street. It's currently an existing single-unit residential building, and they're proposing to convert it to two units. In April 2020, the Planning Commission approved a similar project for the property. The application expired, and the property was sold to the current owners in June of last year. A study session was held on December 9th, 2021, and the Planning Commission had a few recommendations, including that the applicant incorporate cargo bicycle space as well as electric charging capabilities, that they increase the size of the windows to allow more light into the building. It suggested that they convert a bedroom in the front unit to an office space, and that they relocate the trash enclosure to the rear of the property. So revised plans will include space for two cargo bicycle spaces, an electrical outlet for bicycle charging. The front bedroom is now proposed as an office. The applicant has chosen to keep the trash enclosure in the front of the property and feels that the existing openings are sufficient to allow light. So again, the site location is at 129155th Street, located on 55th Street between Boudree Street and Vallejo. The project proposes to convert an existing single unit to two units. They will be adding about 833 square feet. They are reducing an existing non-conforming height of about 33 feet, down to 30 feet. They'll be demolishing the existing detached garage, and all parking is proposed at the rear of the property. Here are some existing photos of the property. And here's our existing and proposed site plan. The bicycle enclosure is at the rear, along with two vehicular parking spaces, and the trash enclosure is still proposed at the front here. So the bicycle parking enclosure has been upgraded to include these mounted spaces, as well as expanded space for cargo bicycle parking. There will be a charging dock located inside as well. Here are the existing and proposed height elevations revised to show the proposed height at the 30-foot max. Again, a section elevation showing the change. Existing and proposed front yard setback showing the trash enclosure in the front. And a proposed overall section that breaks the Unit 1 and Unit 2 visually. Here in the front, we have the bedroom slash office space. In the floor plans, showing Unit 2 on the basement level and in the rear of the property on the main floor, Unit 1 will be accessed from the front of the building, as well as the top level. And here highlighted in front is the office space. Unit 1 will still have five bedrooms. And there's open space in the back, I mean, Unit 2, and there's open space in the back for Unit 2 in the rear patio. There are common spaces for both on the main floors. Here facing 55th Street is the access for Unit 1. And that's the office in the front. So there will now be four bedrooms for Unit 1. And this is on the top floor. The west-facing deck is the open space for Unit 1. Here are proposed elevations. This is showing the entrance from 55th Street to Unit 1. And Unit 2 is accessed from the rear. This is a side facing the residence at 128955th Street. And facing the parking lot. There haven't been any changes to these elevations. And the renderings that give us an idea of what the front open space will look like, the small fence and the fenced enclosure to match. So bonus points are not required in the RM District, but there are required findings for exceeding the base, including neighborhood compatibility, and that the design minimizes the appearance of driveways, parking spaces, and garage drawers. The project achieves that because all the parking is in the back. All required setbacks are met. Two-unit residential projects are exempt from open space requirements, although this project does provide open space. 10% of the lot area must be landscaped, and this achieves that as well, providing over 400 square feet of landscaped area. There's no minimum vehicular parking, but the project provides two automobile spaces in the back of the property. And then six bicycle spaces will be provided as well, and that includes two of the cargo bicycle parking spaces. There are findings for the development bonuses in the RM District, and this project meets those as outlined in the resolution and staff report. Same for the conditional use permit findings and the major design review findings. So staff recommends approval of the proposed duplex conversion at 129155th Street. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant does not have a presentation prepared, but they are available for questions.
Very good, Annalisa, thank you so much. Are there any questions of staff from the commission? Okay, Commissioner Chafe?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Just a quick question on the cargo bike space. I was trying to figure out the dimensions that were provided. Do you know if it's designed to be a hanging space or if it's big enough that the bike can be wheeled in?
Yeah. The details that were included are here. And so the enclosure looks like the door on the side here slides so that you'd be able to walk in. But if maybe the applicant can help answer that question. Elias, are you available?
Charlie, can you elevate them? Or do we need to?
Yes, there are so many attendees here. It's hard to scroll through the list I'm looking for.
Take your time.
Let me see.
Maybe the one that wants to answer can raise that hand.
Elias, for that. Oh, that's a good idea. Sorry, okay, I see a hand. He's going to find it there. No, there, I see. All right, you may speak.
Hey, everyone, it's Elias, the architect for this project. So yeah, just in regards to cargo space, bike parking, they are to be hung, but there's also... But there's also, like, this is kind of like showing a maximum amount. So they like honestly, with these hanging bike racks, you could also like wheel two below. We're just not like, we're assuming that you wouldn't want to like cram a lot in, so we're showing us six spaces, but honestly, you could put in like two on the ground and then two on the racks as well. Or like if you had kid bikes, you could put a couple in there as well.
Thank you. Steven, do you mind if I? If I respond?
No, no, please.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you for responding. At least in my experience with cargo bikes, I personally would not be able to hang one easily, just because of the dimensions and the weight. So just a consideration that you might want to look up the typical length of a long-tail cargo bike as kind of a maximum, or consider a trailer, and think about whether it would fit into this space or not. I think that the enclosure is really nicely designed, and it's great to see the electric ports in there now. I just wouldn't want to miss the opportunity to actually provide good, you know, sort of protection from the elements and also a way to obscure a bike from sight.
Totally, yeah, and that was definitely a consideration of ours. And we definitely did research cargo bike dimensions and implement that into this plan for this space while kind of keeping it a smaller shelter that isn't too big in the back and the rear kind of the building as well.
Great, thank you.
And we can make further recommendations to our commissioner comments, too. Are there any other questions of the applicant or staff at this time? We've seen none, then we will open this up to public.
Public, public hearing?
Public hearing, yes. We'll open the public hearing.
And actuate?
Oh, this, are there any, is there anybody wishing to speak?
I do not see any raised hands among the attendees. Let me double check in my email to see if I've received any more online comment cards. No speakers for this item, it looks like.
Very good. Okay, we will close the period of public, close the public hearing and bring it to the commission for comments, and I will call on the commissioners. So let's start with Commissioner Zepco, any comments you'd like to make?
No, sir.
No, very good. Commissioner Simons?
Project seems fine, not a lot of substantive comments. I think we, as a planning commission, should think about how we can educate property owners about what we're looking for from cargo bikes and e-bikes. It's all kind of new, so maybe we can have staff put together some materials that they can share with folks like this applicant.
Yeah, you actually think Commissioner Gitzoni mentioned that last time we looked at this project. I think that staff is taking that under advisement, and I think it's a good idea. Commissioner Gitzoni?
Not really any comments besides just one small one about the bikes is I don't know if in the bike area, if there's something that will be bolted into the ground or something that bikes can be securely locked to, but I think that's a useful thing to have. Something that's not movable, that's not obtrusive, but can be used to run a secure locker. Other than that, the project looks good to me.
Very good. Commissioner Graham?
No comments for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Chafe, any notes?
Just one small thing, I noticed in, I think it was in the staff report, there was a mention of for kitchens, making sure that there were either two windows that would provide good ventilation or a fan that vents to the outside. And I just, you know, this might be a more general comment, but for this project as well, I really encourage the applicant to go with a fan that pulls pretty powerfully from over the stove and vents outside, just because of the emerging evidence on indoor air quality and how important it is to be able to provide adequate ventilation, especially in kind of an open space kitchen. I think I saw that in the drawings, but it wasn't a hundred percent clear. But that's, that's my only comment. Thanks.
Would, would you like an answer to that?
Sure, out of curiosity, yes.
Yeah, I can hop on with a little maybe educational answer for everyone. So as of the twenty nineteen California residential code cycle, it is required that you have a certain strength fan for any open burner. So that is a twenty nineteen code, which is why we don't see it in a lot of buildings, especially around the Bay Area. When we have older projects, we see a lot of those like fake fans that kind of just go into the kitchen, which is just ridiculous, but kind of just the way it is a lot of the time. So we're required to have fans in the bathroom, normal fresh air fans for the whole building, and then especially fans in the kitchen area as well.
Very informative, and thank you.
Very good, thank you. And Vice Chairman Mendez?
No comment for me, just that this is a huge improvement to what's there, and we always welcome when we can get more than one unit in a space, so that's it.
Great, thank you. And my comment is just, it's a good project, and glad we're getting double what was there in terms of units. I'm glad they're wholesale units, we don't get enough of those. So I'm really hopeful that someone does invite a project and lease out both apartments, so I hope we actually get some more occupancy. And just a recommendation on the bike parking is maybe remove a rack or two and make room for bikes to roll and park along the sliding door with some security. It's just a recommendation that you have to do. But, you know, I agree that a cargo bike would be very hard to lift up and park in an upright rack. But if you can't make it work, you can't, we'll just work on going forward in next projects. But I think it's a very good project, and I think we are ready to entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Very good, thank you.
The motion by Commissioner Chafe and seconded by Vice Chairman Mendez. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gitzoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Simons?
Aye.
Commissioner Zepco?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Mendez?
Aye.
Mayor Keller?
Aye.
Seven ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within fifteen days.
Yay, very good. Let's see this one break around this time. Okay, moving on to item eight point two, the Emory Master Sign Program.
This is also Annalisa.
And did we have recusals on this, or?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, we do.
Let's go through that first.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm going to, it's Commissioners Gitzoni and Simons. So I am going to remove them.
Do they need to? Do they need to make the statement?
Oh, yes, they do, that's right, they do. Thank you.
All these legal things.
Yes, yes, you're right.
Hey, Charlie, quick question here. I thought the city attorney had written that I could participate in both of these items? That was our correspondence this week, I thought, or?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, 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 this is the Emory, this is the Sherwin-Williams project.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Which is across the street from your house. So you are within five hundred feet of this one.
Okay.
So you do need to recuse.
Okay.
Like you did on the study session. So I will move you to the.
Do they still need to make the statement? I don't want to.
I think, yes, you need to state for the record that you are recused, both Chair, both Commissioner Simons and Gitzoni, please.
And why?
And why?
Okay, so I guess I can, first, I am accusing for this item because my residence is within five hundred feet of this proposal.
And can you give your address or APN?
Yeah, I'm at fifteen hundred Park Avenue, number one oh six in Emeryville.
Right, thank you.
And I will also be recusing myself because my primary residence, which I own, is within five hundred feet of this project, and my APN is four nine dash one oh three five dash five zero.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. We'll see you back when we're done with this. Now we can do the staff consultation.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we are back to visit the Emory Master Sign Program. In twenty eighteen, the Planning Commission approved resolution number FDP seventeen zero zero one for the four new buildings in the Sherwin-Williams PUD. The project site has been renamed to the Emory and is currently under construction. December ninth, twenty twenty-one, the Planning Commission held a study session to review the proposed master sign program. And recommendations included that all illuminated signs would be dimmable, and also a reduction in the size of the three retail signs. Both items have been addressed. So to revisit the site, this is the Sherwin, the Emory project here. Buildings B one, B two, and C have the proposed signage. And the intent of the master sign program is to create standards for tenant signage, establish maximum allowable sign area, define permitted sign materials and illumination, does not dictate content. Master Sign Program allows for seven different sign types, including wall signs, canopy signs, blade signs, door window signs, business signs, and A-frame signs. So to familiarize ourselves, building B one is on Hubbard Street, on the corner of Hubbard and Sherwin Avenue. B two is along Hubbard Street. And C is along Hubbard Street as well. And the Master Sign Program.
Annalisa, I have to back you up, that second building is not on Hubbard, it's on Horton, is that not correct? Building B two, that's along.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so two on Horton, Hubbard, one on Horton.
It's partially, goes around a little, it has fronted.
The sign will be fronting on Horton.
Oh, B one, yes, yes. Okay, thank you. B two, B two, yes.
B two is sign fronting on Horton Street, yes. Okay. So the Master Sign Program gives us, you know, provides examples of allowable sign types, also gives us specific maximum lengths and widths, sign materials, and includes inserts showing the location of the proposed signs. Planning Commission comments included reducing the size of the signs, including the canopy sign here. So it was initially proposed at fourteen feet wide, and now that's been revised to twelve feet wide. And this is the canopy sign on building C, facing Hubbard Street. We also have illuminated wall signs. And this is another sign type that Planning Commission requested that they reduce the size of the signs. So these were initially proposed at fourteen feet wide, and now they have been reduced to ten feet wide. And this is on building B one. And this building B one has two of these wall signs. So this is the west elevation facing Hubbard Street. And then this is the south elevation facing Sherwin Avenue. And both have been reduced to ten feet. So the Master Sign Program also includes window signs, and this is for the live-work tenants that they have. And an example of the live-work tenant elevation, showing potential locations for window signs. There's also a proposed shingle sign on building B one. And A-frame signs are also included in the Master Sign Program. This does show tenants where they can and cannot place signs to ensure that they are not placed in the public right of way. Here are the building identification signs. This is a non-illuminated sign painted on brick on building B one. And here is a daytime rendering of that sign. Here's the Emory B two building identification wall sign. This is the only identification wall sign that is lit, and it will be an internal halo LED. The faces are not illuminated. And they will be, this sign will be dimmable, as well as all of the proposed illuminated wall signs. And there's our night rendering. So we believe that we can make the Master Sign Program findings as outlined in the resolution and staff report as well, and the design review findings. And staff recommends approval of the proposed Emory Master Sign Program. That concludes my presentation. The applicant does not have a presentation, but is available for questions.
Very good, thank you. And does the commission have any questions of either staff or the applicant? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we will open up the public hearing. If there is any member of the public wishing to speak on this item, please let the director know. You have three minutes to give issue comments. Charlie, are there any requests to speak?
I do not see any raised hands among the attendees. I will double check my email to see if we got any online speaker cards. I do not have any online speaker cards for this item, and I see no raised hands among the attendees.
Very good. We will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for comments. Commissioner Chafe, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
Vice Chairman Mendez?
No comment for me, thank you.
Commissioner Graham?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Zepco?
No comments from me, thanks.
Very good. The only comment I have is an expression of appreciation for reducing those signs down to ten feet. I think they look much more in proportion and not so in your face, so to speak. I think there will be plenty of space for a business to let the presence be known and be a balance for the neighborhood. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion of approval, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Master Sign Program.
Thank you, and a second?
I have a second, bud.
Thank you, and we'll call on.
On the motion by Vice Chairman Mendez and seconded by Commissioner Chafe. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioners Gitzoni and Simons are recused. Commissioner Zepco?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Mendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within fifteen days.
Very good. Now we're going to move on to three larger subjects. I think we might do the Emory Master Sign Program and then perhaps take a rest from that. Is everyone okay with that? Or do we need a break now? Do you want to invite the other?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Bring those back and then we'll, I think, Vice Chairman Mendez will have to recuse after that.
Yes. Bring them back into the room here. I believe, Vice Chairman Mendez, I believe your recusal is because of a business interest. Is that correct?
I meant to unmute myself, then I turned off my camera. Yes, it is because of that. My employer, BMR is one of our, my employer's source of income.
All right, in that case, I believe you need to leave the meeting altogether.
Okay.
And I will text you when we're done.
Okay, sound good. All right.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
I'm going to try to, multitasking here.
Sorry, don't hurt.
Try to bring Commissioners Simons and.
Gitzoni's back.
Oh, I thought I had him.
Yeah, I don't know. You did it without knowing it.
I guess I did. Commissioner Simons, can you, if you're in the audience, can you raise your hand, please? There you are. Thank you. I will bring you back. Okay, there we go.
All right. And Vice Chairman Mendez has left, so we can start with item nine point one, the Emeryville Center of Innovation Master Sign Program. Did the staff report on this?
This is also Annalisa.
We are here for, well, good evening, Chair, good evening, Commissioners, again. We're here for the Emeryville Center of Innovation Master Sign Program Study Session. The Emeryville Center of Innovation is located along Hollis, Stanford, Horton, and Fifty-third Street, and consists of four new research and development buildings. Building B four here on the corner is existing, but is part of the campus. And so in February twenty twenty-one, the Planning Commission approved resolution number FDP nineteen zero zero two for the four new research and developing buildings and parking structure consistent with the Emeryville Life Sciences Center PUD that was approved in August of nineteen ninety-three. The project site has been renamed the Emeryville Center of Innovation. The purpose of the Emeryville Center of Innovation Master Sign Program is to create standards for campus-wide signage by establishing entry, wayfinding, and tenant signs. is to create standards for campus-wide signage by establishing entry, wayfinding, and tenant signs, and defining permitted sign materials and illumination, along with allowable sign types, but does not dictate content, and in some cases, specific locations. The Master Sign Program allows for five different sign types, including high-rise identification signs, monument signs, ground signs, wall signs, and projecting signs. And so here's a site plan showing a sign legend of all of the various sign types that are proposed, along with their prospective locations. The buildings outlined in pink indicate that high-rise identification signs are proposed on these buildings. The Master Sign Program also includes the required table showing the maximum allowable sign area. Here we have the entry monument sign. And this is proposed at twenty feet. And it is shown alongside the building for scale. This would be located on the corner of Stanford and Hollis Street, in front of building B one. Here's the day rendering, you see it in the corner there. And. There, there's also an entry monument sign, proposed on Hollis and Fifty-third Street. There's an existing monument structure that will be replaced with this Center of Innovation sign. And it is a non-illuminated sign. Here's the day rendering from Hollis. And there are also building tenant identification monument signs. Five of them are proposed. And they are illuminated, and that's the night rendering shown there. This gives us an idea of where they are generally going to be located, as indicated by the red markers here. Vehicular directional ground signs are proposed, there will be three of them. They are also illuminated, and shown on the corners here. There will also be pedestrian directional signage to help people, you know, get around the campus, and have indicate which buildings are where, parking and such. And nine of these signs are proposed. They are nine feet high, and indicated by the red markers here throughout the campus. There are also four building directional signs proposed, located near building entrances. They are eight feet six inches high, and are proposed in these locations. Bicycle directional signage is also proposed, that will get people to bicycle parking, the bicycle path, and also including the South Bayfront Bicycle Bridge. They are three feet nine inches in height, and proposed in these locations throughout campus. The Master Sign Program also proposes high-rise identification signs, and two per building. And we've asked them to sort of look at vantage points. So this is a zoomed-out image showing neighboring high-rise signs in addition to some proposed potential locations. The exact locations aren't known yet, and so these are just going to serve as examples. And this is an example of a high-rise sign for building B one. And this is on the corner of Hollis and Stanford. So the high-rise identification signs, we do, it does provide some information, such as the specific sign dimensions, states the maximum allowable sign area, but it does not dictate the specific content or the exact locations. And so for building B one, we have potential locations shown here, and then the vantage points on the side. And they've done that for each of the buildings that have proposed high-rise signs. So this is building two, B two, B four, B eight, B fourteen. And tenant wall signage is also proposed. Again, they provide specific dimensions and potential locations, but the specific location is not yet determined. Here we have an example of an elevation and some tenant wall signage and a night rendering, because these signs will be illuminated. Here again are potential locations for B one, and B two, B four, as well as the PDU building. And they also included the parking structure signs, these will be illuminated signs. They do not exceed the maximum sign area as proposed. And so the Master Sign Program findings, do they promote visual harmony? That permitted signage is no more than necessary. And that the project is of a high design quality. So to be considered is, does the Planning Commission have any feedback regarding the proposed Master Sign Program? Do you believe you can make the findings? That concludes my presentation, and the applicant does have a presentation to follow.
All right, very good, thank you. Are there any questions from the commission to staff? Camera's not on, do you want to raise your hand? You have a question?
Just scroll this up.
I don't see any raised hands, so we can go ahead and move on. To, oh, I'm sorry?
I will go ahead and promote the applicant to the panel. So we've got three, and one of them is twice, because he's both via phone and via. And via Zoom.
Is that her?
Yeah, so. Okay, I guess that works. There is a person named James in the audience, who I am going to assume is James Prom. Right, hopefully, is Ashley. Ethan is there, James is there.
Ashley is there, bud?
Yes, is she there? There she is, okay, good, okay, everybody's there.
Everybody's there. James, are you gonna start it, or is it gonna be Ethan? Ashley?
I believe it'll be Ethan.
Hi, guys, can you hear?
Yep.
Okay, great, let me just try to share my screen. Let me see here. I know you guys have a full agenda, so I will try to keep this relatively brief, and Anna-Lisa covered most of it, so I should be pretty quick. But, um, I'll say, good evening, my name's Ethan Warsh. I'm a Director of Development at Biomed Realty. And I'd like to begin my very brief presentation, like I said, very brief, by thanking all of you for making time on your agenda to consider our submission tonight. See if this works. And thank you, Anna-Lisa, for a very thorough presentation. So many of you are familiar with Biomed, but I did want to take the opportunity to give you a brief rough session, especially for those that weren't on the Planning Commission during our FDP review. So Biomed's a developer of, and long-term operator of Class A life science lab and office space in all of the major biotech markets in the US, as well as the UK. And unlike a number of our competitors, our, for new entrants to the market, life science is all that we do, and we've been doing it successfully for a very long time. And while we're well-established in other parts of the Bay, and a host of, and a host of number of large-name life science companies, including Amgen, Abbi, Alumina, Emeryville represents a new opportunity for us, and one that we're extremely excited about and deeply, deeply committed to. So Anna-Lisa gave some of this background, but I'm just gonna, I did not know exactly what was gonna be in our presentation, so I'm just gonna run through it again, if you don't mind. So Biomed's Emeryville campus encompasses approximately twelve acres, and its full buildout would be home to over one million square feet of Class A life science lab and office space within four new buildings and the existing Legareta building. It also includes approximately three acres of publicly acceptable open space, public infrastructure improvements, including new streetlights and ridged bike lanes. The project that you can see at the bottom of the screen right now received approval of its FDP in February 2021, and plans for the first phase of development, two hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of lab and office space, Chiron Plaza, which is an open space, newly imagined Chiron Way, open to the public and designed to be pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly, as well as the parking structure with a quarter acre of adjacent open space, is all currently under review with the city's planning, building, and public works departments. And we do hope to break ground on that first phase of construction in the next month. So this is just a site plan to just get you all oriented. I realize Anna-Lisa also showed this, but you can see Hollis along the bottom of the screen, and Horton running through the top third. You know, with our campus interest first around, building one, starting at Stanford and Hollis, and moving around, building two, building four, eight, nine, and then the parking structure called building fourteen. All of these building numbers are fold-overs from the original nineteen ninety-five Chiron master plan, that's why they don't seem particularly logical. Not that Chiron was not logical, it's just that when we, you know, reimagine the campus, we skip some of the numbers. So I wanted to share some updated renderings with everyone. So here, as you can see, phase one, which is our building, called building two, and you can see on the left side of the screen, the Legareta building, building four, which is the existing. Building two is directly adjacent to that. And you can see a future building one in the background. And then you can see images of building two from different vantage points. So this, these plans are what's currently under review with the city. And here are some images that many of you will recognize from our FDP. And so you can see, again, building one, Stanford and Hollis, building eight, nine, along Fifty-third Street, the parking structure on Horton, with that adjacent open space that I mentioned, and then some, you can see some of the open space and connections that we were planning on creating into the campus. So, I only want to make a few points about the master signage plan. But generally, this plan could be generally categorized, sorry, signage in this plan can be generally categorized as campus identity slash wayfinding signage that would be provided by Biomed, or as future tenant signage that will be installed by the tenant. Biomed as a developer is only going to be proposing the former and cannot predict the specific signage that future tenants will propose, since we're building on spec. And aside from Zimergen, who are in building four, don't have a specific tenant in mind at the moment. So through the combination of these two elements, it is our intent to create a high-quality signage plan that complements the site context and architecture, and helps you establish this site as a premier, best-in-class life science campus. But differently, through this plan, we're hoping to accomplish two things. One is to establish a high-quality campus identity through consistent font and materiality proposed for wayfinding and entry signage, and to establish location, sign type, size, and general guidelines for future tenant signage that is complementary to the campus ID wayfinding signage. And second is to establish predictability for future tenants, so they know what to expect in terms of their own signage rights and approval process, and also so they can predict the signage rights of their fellow tenants. In many cases, we're simply restating the Emeryville Planning Code guidelines, but for procedural reasons are including that guidance in this Master Sign Program. And lastly, we'd like to provide a user-friendly document for staff to review future submissions. So I don't want to belabor this point, but I did want to reiterate that what we're proposing for high-rise signage is consistent with all of the guidelines in the current planning code. And you've seen this image in Anna-Lisa's presentation as well, but here's a rendering of what those high-rise signs, you know, may look like on building one and building two. Okay, so the only other item I'd like to spend any time on this evening is the entry monument sign, which, along with the architecture and open space, will be playing a prominent role in placemaking or creating the brand of the campus. We're proposing to use a material called di-chloric glass, which is a dynamic colored glass that we think is tasteful, although also being eye-catching and modern. You can see an example of it on the left, and here on the right, you can see how it would be applied to that monument sign. Let's see. We're proposing these signs at two locations, one in your vertical configuration, similar to what I just showed, at Hollis and Stanford, and one in a horizontal configuration at Hollis and Fifty-third, which would replace the existing Nevaris sign. Here's a rendering of the proposed entry monument sign at Hollis and Stanford, which just provides some context of the size. And while we do recognize that the sign appears, you know, in the documentation to be large, we believe in final context, it is size-appropriate. And here's a rendering of that entry monument sign in the horizontal configuration at Fifty-third and Hollis. And here's again, just an elevation, the Stanford and Hollis sign. And lastly, an image to show the size as compared to something that might be more familiar to all of you, right, shown next to the Pixar sign. So, with that, I'm available for questions. But again, really appreciate your time and for putting us on the agenda this evening. Thanks.
Very good, Ethan, thank you, appreciate your expedient explanation of that. Do any commissioners have any questions of the project designers? Your camera's not on, if you'd like to raise your hand. Okay, I'm seeing none, so. And at this point, we can move it onto the public comment period. We'll open this up for public comment. Charlie, are there any public persons wishing to speak on this item?
I do not have any online speaker cards for this item, and I do not see any raised hands among the attendees.
Okay, very good, we will close the public comments section, and bring it back to the commission for comments. Commissioner Simons, any comments?
I don't have any comments on this, I feel like I haven't seen this topic come to me before, so I'd just love to hear from other commissioners who have more experience. Thanks.
Very, very good, thank you. Commissioner Gitzoni?
I don't have any real substantive comments, but I do, I do want to say that I think that the di-chloric glass element really does kind of add a nice design touch, and it seems to harmonize with some of the stuff in the buildings. But apart from that, I don't really have any comments.
Very good. Commissioner Chafe?
Thanks, I would echo what Commissioner Gitzoni said. To me, it reminds me a little bit of the public art in front of the Amtrak station in terms of the color play, which I think is nice. The, I mean, this is more just kind of a preference thing. It seems like there are a lot of the high-rise identification signs. I understand that they're within the design guidelines and regulations, so that's fine, but it just seems like a lot. But I'll just, I'll leave it there, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Verne?
No comments for me, thank you so much.
Okay, very good. Now, Anna-Lise, if I could ask you, I just have a couple of comments, and if I can ask you to bring up your presentation.
I don't know if it's important, but I also don't have any comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, your camera's not on, I totally missed you.
Don't worry, I don't have any comments, you're good.
Very good, thanks, thank you for interrupting me. So if Anna-Lise could bring that up and go to, I believe it's page sixteen of your presentation, what I just want to ask is, if you guys think, I, in looking at this, yeah, sixteen, I, I'm wondering if this sign is a little too tall. And I don't mind the height of the sign introduced in the space, but, yeah, this one here. one here, it just seems like the information is way up there, especially for this person in a wheelchair. So I'm wondering, and there's a lot of space down near the bottom, so I'm wondering if everything can be dropped down about three feet, so that, you know, people could see the information that's, you know, like I said, I don't mind the height, it just seems like the information people need to read is way up there. So that is just one comment. And then on B4, the Legareta Building, I understand that companies want to identify themselves, and I've never been opposed to high-rise signs. I'm just wanting to ask you guys to look at if it's really appropriate to this building. It's not really a high-rise, it doesn't have the same feel and look of the high-rises, and it almost, in my opinion, kind of cheapens that building to put a sign up on top of that. So I don't know what you guys are feeling about that. And it faces the railroad tracks, and the company identification sign, the lower ones, I don't have a problem with, but I'm just kind of wondering if this is really appropriate for that particular building. So when you come back, think about that, sell me on it, you know, when you come back or something, if you really think it's necessary. But that building is just, it's probably one of the few iconic buildings that Emeryville has, and to me, it just kind of detracts from something so well-done. And it's going to be a unique building in your complex, so the high-rise signs seem to match with the glass high-rises that you're creating, but on this building, I guess, in my opinion, is just kind of a little, a little inappropriate or out of character, so just to think of that. And also, Annalise, if you have any, if you could bring up the list of findings that you want us to consider, then we can ask the commission if they can find all those findings. So I, since I'm already speaking, I can answer that I believe that we can find all six findings myself. Commissioner Verne? You're unmuted, but do you believe you can bring the findings?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. So I don't have any comments, and yeah.
Okay, so you believe you can bring the findings?
Findings for?
The six findings up on the screen. Those are things we have to be able to do to prevent this, when it comes back to us.
Except the building that you mentioned, I think all of them should be fine.
Okay. Very good. Commissioner Gisani?
I think so.
Okay. Commissioner Chee?
Yes, with slight hesitancy around number five, I think there's just a lot of different types of signs, and it was a little hard for me to get a sense of what it would look like, you know, how often, walking through it, I would run into, in my visual field, each of the types of signs that was shown to us today. I don't really have any serious issues, though.
Maybe they could give us that illustration when it come back. And Commissioner Zucco, I don't want to forget you. Erica? Okay, Commissioner Simons?
Hi, Coach. I feel like, yeah, I'm comfortable making the finding. I would say, like, chair color, I'm a little skeptical of the large signs on the one older building, but hopefully they can come back with a new design in the future. Thank you.
Okay. One more try, Commissioner Zucco, if you can, if you believe you can make the findings, are you there? Okay, we will move on, and she can hopefully make the findings when this comes back to us. So the staff and the developer have everything you need from this time?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So we can end this item, and at this point in time, I'd like to recommend that we take a 85, seven-minute break, and we will reconvene and come back to item 9.2, the Bay Street Grocery Store. Okay?
And I will let Commissioner Vice President Mendez know that she can return to the meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let Maru bring up her presentation.
Okay, thank you. I, that is not the correct presentation for the episode. I'm not sure what is going on.
It's the world of Zoom.
All right, there you go. Can you see my screen now?
Yep.
Okay. All right, good evening, everybody. This is a second study session on the Bay Street Grocery Store. I'm Miru Desai, Senior Planner and Project Manager of this project. So just a quick background, the Commission first saw this, reviewed this project last year in September. This was followed by a review by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee in October, followed by a City Council Study Session in October again of last year. The applicant held a virtual community meeting on January 20th, and we are here today with the second study session. It is, at this point, the project is scheduled for a Commission Decision Public Hearing for next month. So just by the way of quick reminder, in terms of what is Bay Street, as we all know, Bay Street has a PUD, PDP permit on it, which the council approved back in 1999, and various final development plans for retail, entertainment, and residential users were approved in 2000, with the last two happening for West Elm, the furniture store, in 2007, and then the hotel, the Hyatt House Hotel FDP, was approved in 2014. The area that we'll be focusing on today is Parcel B, where is an existing building that houses the E3 Furniture Store and other retail stores, and used to formally house the Old Navy Store and the Elephant Bar. So, the project description involves removal of this existing one-story building and proposing a new grocery store. And there also, as part of this, will involve reconfiguration of the plaza area. So this is the existing site plan, and this is the proposed site plans. As you see, they have made a few changes, and I will go through that, what the key changes that are. One is, the key one is this reconfigured plaza. So, as you may recall, one of the recommendations at the last Planning Commission that the staff had was to, in order for them to retain this ramp and to have the teaser parking, which would involve removal of this whole plaza area, the suggestion was made that they close this portion of Bay Street and convert this into a non-car plaza area for residents and folks to enjoy. So they have incorporated that in their design. They have also shown this new median that will, that is in connection with the improvements that they are doing along the Olone Way. The other change is that now a left turn here onto the ramp will be allowed, and the turn to the parking garage will, the lanes to the parking garage from the existing three lanes would be reduced to two lanes. So these are the floor plans. They themselves have not changed. This is the ground floor level. The main entrance is here. The loading will occur off Olone Way, and what you see in this gray is back-of-the-house functions. There is rooftop parking. They have reduced the parking from 118 to 105 to accommodate some back-of-house users. Elevations by themselves have not changed. This is what you saw back last year, and no further changes have been made. And this is the Olone Way elevation, as well as the Shell Mount or the West elevation. This is the circulation shown in terms of the trash and also loading, and how the teaser parking would work. We are in the process of getting this reviewed from Fair and Pace to ensure that this loading as proposed will function without blocking Shell Mount Street. So more to come on that. This shows sort of the bicycle circulation around the site. The purple spots are locations of short-term bike spaces, and they total about 60 spaces throughout the area that you are seeing. This is the pedestrian circulation, in terms of how the pedestrian will move around the site. And this is a little path that goes through the Olone, through the Olone Memorialization Park. So in terms of tree removal, last year in September, when you reviewed this project, it was indicated that there would be relocation of these three palm trees in order to accommodate the project, as well as removal of these five trees in order to accommodate the loading, the indoor loading area. Last year, what was not identified was removal of these trees in the Olone Memorialization Park. These are about 17 trees. The trees are being removed because they are close within, less than three feet from the existing building wall, as well as the proposed new building. And number 10, 11, and 14 are in poor health, and 12 and 13 are no longer actually there. So these are the, these are the pair, these are the palm trees that will be relocated. These are the trees behind the bus stop along Shell Mount Street, which will be removed. And these are the trees in Olone Park. So what is, what you're looking at is the entrance. So there's Bay Street here, this is the entrance to the park. And as you move, oh, sorry, and as you move west, this is the path along, you can see the location of these trees. It's pretty close to the existing wall, and the proposed new wall will be replacing where the new, the existing wall goes. These are basically interpretive monument signage in the park. So this is, as you're walking west on the path, and you can look, you can see the location of the trees. What, what is to be noted is that all the trees that I've shown are on private property, and therefore will not require a tree removal permit. However, our regulations allows the Commission to require that the existing healthy on-site trees be preserved and incorporated into the project unless this is shown to be infeasible. Staff notes that the trees that are proposed to be removed in the park are English oak and Idaho locust trees that are not native to the Bay Area and would not have been present when the Olone community thrived in this area. So this may be an opportunity to replace these trees with ones that are native and more suited for the memorialization park. The arborist, the city arborist, has identified a list of native trees that would be suitable replacements. Today, we do have the city arborist at this meeting, so if there are any questions from her, she is available for questions. This is the landscaping and the plaza features that is, that was part of your packet. I understand that the applicant has been revising and refining these plans, so I will not go into the various details and let the applicant kind of walk through their, their plans for this area and the landscaping ideas. This kind of shows the rendering from the northeast corner. So in terms of land use, it involves replacement of different types of retail stores within, you know, what is a 52,000 square foot building, with a new 48, a little over 48,000 square foot of grocery store. As the type of use remains the same, the retail and the size is approximately the same, the proposed use and the building size are consistent with the PDP. In terms of parking, as I noted, it includes 105 parking spaces on the rooftop. This is additional parking that is not contemplated by the PDP, as parking for the retail entertainment uses is provided within the existing garage. However, this is not considered to be inconsistent with the PDP since it does not alter the use or the general size of the building on Parcel B. The maximum parking that would be allowed by our existing or current parking standards would be 213 parking spaces. So the project, as I mentioned, does involve the removal of the plaza area between the Barnes and O'Bruce Building and Parcel B and its replacement with surface parking and vehicular circulation. In exchange, as I noted, a new plaza has been created by closing the Bay Street to vehicle traffic south of the proposed northern ramp to the rooftop parking. Staff believes that this then is in conformance with the intent of the PDP for a pedestrian plaza in Block 1 of the South Bayfront mixed-use project. I'm just going to quickly run through some of the comments that the Commission made at the September meeting. The Commission generally liked the use and accorded the need for a grocery store in this part of town. The Commission also expressed concerns regarding intermodal traffic circulation and the removal of the existing plaza. They did note that a plaza is often used by children and families. The Commission supported the staff's suggestion of keeping Bay Street closed to vehicles south of the ramp. And the Commission agreed that if the applicant incorporated the staff's suggestion regarding the closure of Bay Street and create a new plaza area south of the ramp, then that would preclude a need for a PUD, PDP amendment. Three members of the public spoke at the September meeting. While the use again was appreciated, concerns were expressed regarding traffic and general circulation in this area. BPAC also reviewed the project at their October meeting last year. The committee felt that the proposal was far-centric and that the loss of plaza was unfortunate. The committee stated that the applicant consider only one exit and entrance to the rooftop parking and keep the southern portion of Bay Street completely closed to vehicles. The committee suggested improvements to transit amenities by making improvements to the bus stop, the existing bus stop. There was a suggestion to provide car space for electrical, electric scooters, and that the location of the new bicycle park can be such that it would easily allow shopping carts to be taken to the bike parking. The council also reviewed this project in October. At this meeting, the applicant provided a revised site plan, which is now being proposed. With that change, the council confirmed that the inclusion of a relocated plaza in the design preclude the need for an amendment to the PDP, which would have otherwise required council approval. The council recommended the following: bus stop improvements, use of automated bollards, surface parking time limits, this is the time limits for the surface parking spaces that are being proposed in front of the grocery store, provision of electric outlets, near bicycle parking, inclusion of cargo bicycle parking. The community meeting was held last week. It was virtual. Approximately 10 community members attended, in addition to Councilmember Welch and Commissioner Keller. Key comments included elimination of the north ramp, improvements to the AC Transit Emery Go Bus Stop on Shell Mount Street, and concerns regarding conflicts between pedestrians and vehicular traffic at the Olone Way and Bay Street intersection. A comment was made to provide sidewalk sections, details of the connection with the bridge, and operational characteristic of the store. Staff also made several comments, and the app, and staff's comments and the applicant's responses were attached to the staff report. Most of them were addressed. In addition to that, staff has two more comments at this time, and this is regarding the bus stop and the memorialization park. Given that several, the BPAC Committee, the council, and also the community meeting, comments included improvements to the bus stop, staff has come up with this draft proposal for your review. So as I noted before, applicant is proposing to remove the right-hand lane and convert it into the median island, shown in yellow here, and move the bike lane to the right. And as they're doing this, staff is proposing relocating the bus stop on this median. This will allow, people would off-board the buses onto the island and then cross the bike lane, as, as is the condition at Shell Mount Street today, now near Marketplace. And this will result in the bus stop getting better visibility, and it gets it closer to the bridge landing, and also it is closer to the park entrance, which would allow bus patrons while waiting for buses to wander around the park. Obviously, the exact location where on the median would need to be figured out through transportation experts like Fair and Pace. The other comment that staff has at this time, that in the park, in the memorialization park, in addition to those tall monument signs that I showed you in the pictures, there are also ground-level interpretive signage that have been faded and are unreadable, as you can see. Staff proposes to draft a condition of approval that will involve redoing this signage that is fading. In terms of next steps, as I mentioned, Fair and Pace is doing a transportation analysis to ensure that the proposed circulation and loading will function as designed. A PUD, PDP conformity analysis is also being done by UPP. As I mentioned again, at this time, the project is scheduled for the February 24th Planning Commission Meeting for a decision hearing. So in terms of what issues that the Commission need to consider at this time, what we'd like to know is, are the choice of materials, color, and the proposed design acceptable to the Commission? In terms of trees, as I indicated, the proposal includes relocation of four palm trees, removal of five, actually they're not popular trees, but five trees to accommodate the new building, including the loading area near Shell Mount Street. And 17 trees in the memorialization park are also being removed as they are within three feet of the project area and are in poor condition. So the question for the Commission is, does the Commission think that the project should be designed such that the trees in the park are preserved? Or is one-to-one replacement of the trees that are native to the area acceptable? In terms of the bus stop, does the Commission agree with staff's suggestion of the bus stop relocation on the new median? And of course, any other issues that the Commission may have at this time. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. I understand the applicant too has a presentation.
Very good, Maru. Thank you. I'm going to run through the commissioners and see if there are any questions of staff. Vice Chairman did.
I have a question, Maru. If I remember correctly, I think last time there was a recommendation or suggestion about a traffic light at the, at the north end. Was there any further development on that?
So Fair and Pace, like I mentioned, is working on that. We don't have findings for, for to share at this time, but we will have that the next time you see this project come by.
Okay. And then, and then I have a, I guess I need a little bit more clarity on the tree removals. So there, the trees that they're proposing to remove over there by the memorialized area, are those trees healthy, or are they removing them because of construction? Can you just clarify that for me?
Yes, of course. Okay, so these trees that are all lined up here, so from 15 to 27, these are close to the existing building, and that same footprint is going to be for the new building as well on that side. So if these trees are to be preserved, then according to the city arborist, the, the new building's wall needs to be 10 feet south in order to preserve that. Number 10, 11, and 14, the reports states are in bad condition, and hence they are being removed. 12 and 3 are no longer present.
Okay. Thank you, Maru.
Maybe if I could just embellish that a little bit. The applicant initially did not propose the removal of any of these trees. They also did not provide an arborist's report. So we asked them to have an arborist's report prepared to cover all of the trees on the site. And when the arborist's report came back, it recommended removal of all of these trees in the memorialization park area for the reasons that Miru explained. We had our city arborist peer review their arborist's report, and she agreed with their conclusions.
Thank you, Charlie, for that further clarification. Those are all my questions, Maru. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Chee.
Thank you. I just had a question, and this is me being relatively recent, rather than, you know, multi-decade resident of Emeryville. Were there native voices involved in the creation of the memorialization park? I'm asking specifically because whether, you know, whether there are any implications for removing these trees, if the trees may have been selected for a certain reason that would be particularly meaningful to people who are involved with the creation of the park? Do you know if there's any special significance to the trees that were placed and are potentially going to be removed?
I can respond to that. I was here at the time that this park was built. I was not here when the whole center was approved. That was in the 90s. And I arrived in Emeryville in 2000, but I was here when this was built. And as a matter of fact, one of the conditions of approval required the planning director to review and approve the signage, the interpretive signage that is in the park. I don't recall anything about the landscaping. I know there was, what's called the most likely descendant, was involved heavily in the project in terms of the re-interment of the human remains that were found. And the Olone people were peer, or reviewed the signage that was in the park. And I reviewed it, and then my comments were reviewed by the tribal members. And I remember I learned a few things because they set me straight on a couple of facts about indigenous people that I didn't realize. So I got educated through that process. I don't recall any discussion of the landscaping or the trees. I think that was just a landscape plan that was prepared for the South Bayfront Shopping Center.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Durham, questions for staff?
We don't have any questions.
Commissioner Goodson, questions?
I had questions, but they've been asked by others, so thank you.
Oh, very good. And Commissioner Zepco?
Nothing for me, but I loved Commissioner Chase's question and want to thank her for that. I think that was lovely. But nothing else for me. Thanks.
Very good. Thanks. I myself have no questions of staff, so if the developer would like to come up and give us their presentation, try to elevate them to...
I am, I am in the process of promoting them right now. Takes a second. Although I'm learning slowly how to use Zoom more efficiently. Aren't we all? And then they'll change it. I know. All right. I think I've done it in record time.
Good evening.
Good evening. Take it away.
Yes. Maru, thank you so much for all your time and for that very good presentation. Charlie, thank you as well. Thank you, planning commissioners, for taking the time this evening to, to work with us again. We're really excited about the opportunity and really excited about the changes that we've made, mostly at staff and in your direction. So we want to go through, we want to highlight some of the changes we've made. I know Maru did that very well. And we'll try to work through this quickly because I know we're getting late and we've got other things on the agenda. So if we could pull up the slide deck that we have. Did everybody see that all right?
Yes.
Yes. Again, I mean, you know, this is Bay Street, CenterCal and our whole team. We're, we're very, very excited about the opportunity. We've owned the property now for, since May, and have an overall vision for the, for the project, and this is part of that vision. So thank you so much for working with us. Again, very briefly, our project is to revitalize Bay Street to be safe, active, easily accessible, to serve the daily needs of the growing neighborhood. Bay Street will be enjoyable place to shop, live, work, and play. So this is something we talk about as a team all the time. It's very important, not only at this project, but all of our projects. So it's something we think about and, and really work on every day. Next slide. Why grocery? Well, one of the things that, it happens with a lot of shopping centers, but in particular with Bay Street, is retail changes. And you have to change with it, or sooner or later, you won't be successful. And at Bay Street, we think that one of the key ingredients, not the only one, okay? But one of them is to, is to bring grocery, that daily goods and services, that daily needs, that daily foot traffic will really help generate not only activity from the grocery store, but it has that compounding effect where it drives other traffic. It drives the need for more restaurants. It drives, drives the merchandising mix for different kind of uses that will benefit the neighbors, the residents, and the other merchants. So very excited about the opportunity to bring grocery to Bay Street. Next slide. So now we'll get into the proposed development. As Maru pointed out, what we wanted to show you, next slide, is this was the older plant. So this was the one... So this was the one you guys saw in September. And as, as Maru pointed out, you know, Charlie and planning commissioners, when we met with you last time, had this, had a lot of the same comments. So we went back to the drawing board and really wanted to think about what we could do in this new vehicular free zone to activate this area for Plaza, for, for, for neighbors and customers on a daily basis, but then also as an area to program for events, you know, for concerts. You know, one example is we were able to work with, with city and staff on the bridge opening event. And this is the area where we were able to have music, a band, food trucks, a place to eat, tables outside for people to sit and talk with their friends and neighbors. So really excited about the opportunity to, to make that change to the site plan. So next, next slide. So this is, this is what you see today. We think this creates a really nice area for daily gathering and, and placemaking, but also an area where you can have, you know, regular events, whether it's an art festival, or whether it's a concert, or, or whatever the case may be. And it really provides that sense of place and that sense of connectivity between, you know, the new grocery store, the food terrace that's under construction, and the Bridge Landing Plaza that we'll talk about a little bit today too. So it creates that, all that connection for bikes, for pedestrians, in areas where you can just sit and, and be with your friends. So on that, I'm going to turn it over to Marco with SWA Group to talk a little bit more detail about some of the finer points of the Plaza.
Marco, you're on mute.
Doesn't show him on mute.
Thank you. I, I appreciate you mentioning that. Thanks, Craig. And good evening, Chair Keller and commissioners. And as Craig mentioned, we're really excited about this plan. And we, we, when we last came before you, the bridge hadn't opened, and now it's open. And so, and all of us have walked over to the, the other part of Emeryville and, and experienced the Greenway. And we're so excited about being able to do what we mentioned to you last time, which is to extend the Greenway along the Aloney corridor, as well as weave it into Bay Street, create a new hundred percent corner at Bay Street and Aloney, the Greenway, and then, as Craig mentioned, extend a larger pedestrian space between the new grocery entrance and the dining terrace, which is now under construction, and the portals to and from the garage and all the walkways from the streets into Bay Street. And so before I get into more detail, I just want to mention that there's sort of three parts to the outdoor space. One is this garden court at the grocery entrance, and this gathers up the people coming to and from the garage and the garage portal that's below the AMC theaters. And this connects along with the storefronts on the other side of the street. Then in the middle of the grocery, there's the set of large stairs that go up to the second floor, which is now being redone as the food terrace, as well as there's another portal to and from the garage at this space. And as Craig mentioned, opposite that stair, we show a small stage, which can be activated with events. And then maybe it's a game zone when it's not an event. And then closer to the bridge, of course, we have the Bridge Landing and the Greenway extension, as we showed to you before, but now it's all knit together from Aloney all the way to the grocery and, and the, the portal to the, to the AMC theater there. So as you know, this is what the, the base of the bridge looked like not, not too long ago. And you can see that the existing condition, of course, all the construction fence is down, but there's a fair amount of street paving, and there isn't much pedestrian place, basically sidewalks, and there's no place to linger, no place to meet. And yet, this is where all the people are kind of flowing past each other and meeting in this hundred percent corner. And so, as we showed you last time, this slims Aloney a bit to capture space for the multi-use path that comes from the sloped walk that comes to and from the bridge, and also with the stairs and extends the Greenway in a way that it currently doesn't. It just kind of drops you off in the street, extends the Greenway all the way to Shellmount, and then, as you know, points to the, to the bay and to the bridge, et cetera. And you can start to see when we slim bay and Aloney, we capture a lot of people's space. That's a lot of what, what Craig's vision is, is to kind of have a lot more people's space, to have this be just a great place to be. And then, you know, the, the new plan that we're showing you today has a lot more people's space as you move south. This is exactly that view. We're at Aloney, you can see the stairs coming down from the new South Bayfront Bridge. You're looking down all the way to the AMC and Uniqlo and all the, all the storefronts and the coming dining terrace, and of course, the grocery at the corner. You can see the, the one-lane approach to the rooftop parking. This is, of course, the Temezcal Creek underneath. And rather than before, where it was sort of a series of sidewalks and streets with curbs, this is all a flesh experience now. Moving a little bit further south, you can see from the Bridge Landing Plaza southwards, we have some rolling planters that divide the sort of day-to-day flows from occasional fire access. And you can see that this is a kind of a generous people's space. Then at the corner of the grocery, this is also slightly even larger space because it's not between the buildings, it kind of bleeds out beyond the buildings. This is a garden court. This is the main entrance to and from the grocery and the stairs that communicate from the rooftop parking. You can see that in the central area of this all pedestrian plaza, there are loose lightweight tables and chairs, and that's so that it can serve as a fire access when needed. But generally, it's a entirely people-oriented space. There are bike racks on both sides of the entrance, including, you know, fairly generous spacing so that you can get cargo bikes and any number, any different kind of a bike to park right at the entrance. Here are sections so that you can see them in scale. Again, this is the corner entrance of the grocery. You can see the plan here, featuring a lot more vegetation. We're introducing trees where there had not been trees in this zone and really providing to kind of scale it down and, and just make it a really great people place. And this is the food terrace up above that's being renovated and, and recast right now. Moving a little bit northwards, opposite the stairs that communicate to and from the food terrace, the notion of a, a small stage and sort of maybe a game zone and, and right in the middle, middle of that stretch. Again, this is a view of the food terrace that's currently in, under construction. And then back to near Aloney, sort of marking the hundred percent corner of the Greenway and Bay Street is a fire table and a plaza with tables and chairs. And really, we think it's going to be a fantastic place to be and to meet your friends when you, when you go to Bay Street. And it totally transforms what is there now that's very sidewalk, street sidewalk-like. This is a complete flexible people's space. Here are some of the kind of character images of the furniture and both lightweight furniture that you can move out of the way in the fire and things that are more heavy, still nudgable, but heavier and in areas that are adjacent to the, the fire area. These are the, the types of bike racks that the, the bike committee requested, and that's what we're showing for the new bike racks throughout. Also, this is the notion of the fire table at the hundred percent corner. In terms of planting, you can get a sense of a mix of native California plants and a certain amount of flower, flowering plants to provide a, a kind of a nice color burst within that new pedestrianized space. With that, I'll pass it on to Eric to talk about the grocery.
Thanks, Marco. Good evening, everyone. Eric Price with Lowy Architecture. Clearly, there's a lot of really exciting site plan changes and improvements that you're seeing tonight. As Miru pointed out, the grocery store, largely the same. We'll go through the next few slides pretty quickly on the right-hand side of the page. So could we go back one, one quick slide?
Sorry.
That's all right. There we go. Right-hand side of the page, grocery store represented here in pink and blue. Bottom right corner is the, is the main entry again, engaging, spilling out onto the plaza. It's very exciting to have that, that kind of feature. Grocery store again, it's about the same, is the same size as it was before, forty thousand square feet. And we do still have two needed vehicular access ramps, one north edge of the building and one at the south, southwest, closest to Bay Street and, and Shellmount. On the left-hand side, rooftop parking, a hundred and five parking stalls, rooftop mechanical equipment, fully screened, light poles for safety and convenience also, fully cut off, light fixtures. Go to the next slide, please. And Marco and Miru have already touched on a few of these details. Here's our bicycle circulation routes and plan. As you can see, the bike racks are spread throughout the center, around the plaza area and on both sides of, of the main entry of the grocery store, which is sort of bottom center of the diagram you're seeing now. Next page, please. Here's the vehicular circulation slide, and we just want to point out here that the two ways, again, that grocery, customers are arriving from the north, from Aloney Way, taking two right turns to arrive at the first of the two ramps, the one-way ramp going up only. The second ramp's in the bottom right corner, that's accessed customers arriving and turning left at the internal intersection. Folks that are coming to the, coming to the broader Bay Street to go shopping or movie theater are actually taking a right, as they do now, to get to that, to the existing parking structure. And then, of course, there's the parking lot between the grocery store and Barnes &amp; Noble, which is a short-term lot that's really for employee and third-party loading. Next slide. Spent a little bit of time here explaining how trucks, delivery trucks and trash get in and out of the site. Show purple here are, is the semi-truck arrival. They're always going to be coming southbound on Shellmount, taking a left, left turn through the driveway, which will remain in the same location that it currently is. One of the tweaks we've made in order to facilitate safety and smooth entry, we've increased the aperture of the building by about ten feet, where the semi-trucks will pull in and actually maneuver in a covered area. So it'll be very well-contained. Once they've finished unloading and done their business, they will head out south, take a right at Bay Street, and then a left heading southbound on Shellmount. Trash trucks do the reverse. They'll be arriving northbound on Shellmount. They'll take a right into the site and take a left into the loading area over a curb that will, again, do their business, covered, well-contained, and drive out to Shellmount, take a right heading northbound. Next slide. And as has been pointed out already, lots of pedestrian connectivity. It's really exciting to be part of a grocery store that is really engaged in this wonderful plaza, this big open space, lots of glass, there'll be lots of visibility inside, from inside the store and out. Next slide. And just a quick enlargement here, this is the, the parking lot that is between the grocery store and what's now Barnes &amp; Noble. And we worked with our own traffic, traffic consultant on the three-point turn that's at the end of this with pedestrian safety and convenience in mind. Next slide.
So I think with that, you can see how the whole project stitches together and I think makes, you know, the Greenway completes it, completes the, the big investment the city has made with the South Bayfront Bridge and, and weaves that into the Bay Street north-south experience and, and the new grocery.
Very good. Does that end your presentation, Mr. Durham?
Craig, do you have any, any final remarks?
No, that completes our presentation. Again, I just want to thank everybody on our team for your time and all the hard work that's gone into this, and also, again, staff and everybody on the call. Appreciate your, appreciate your thoughtful time and comments.
Very, very good. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. So are there any questions from, excuse me, the commission to the project designers? So we'll start with Commissioner Simons.
Sure. Thanks so much, Chair Keller. I have a question. So I think it's Eric, you just mentioned those spaces in front of Barnes &amp; Noble that I think the commission is not a huge fan of. As for employees and third-party parking, I thought this was so we could lure customers in, otherwise nobody was going to go, blah, 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 blah. Can you talk about exactly what the purpose of this is, are?
I think the audio was a little, a little hard to hear. I, I think I can answer that, sure. I think the question was about how does the lot between Barnes &amp; Noble and the grocery store function?
Yeah. And so we've been told that was like teaser spaces for customers, and you just described it as for employees or third parties or third-party customers. Who are the...
Why don't we go back to that slide? I think, I think there was a bit of a misunderstanding. I think Eric was talking about the stalls that were right, were inside the loading area.
Oh, okay.
Those are not for customers. Those are for employees or, or people coming in to make like small deliveries is what he meant.
Got it. Got it. And I guess I had, I guess this is more of a question for staff, but currently, is the way trucks enter this area, is do they turn, do they come south on Shellmount and turn left, sort of mid-block? Or is this a change for the truck traffic flow? I'm concerned about bike safety. I think cars already move quickly there, and it seems like there's a lot going on with buses. So just wondering if we're putting more trucks crossing the road there.
Miru, I don't know if you have any information about that. I'll just say anecdotally, what I know is that, of course, Old Navy is not in this building anymore, but when they were, this was their loading area behind, you know, generally the same approximate location with the same entrance off of Shellmount. I don't know if those trucks come from the north or the south, probably both. But they, my understanding is that they were smaller, like box trucks and vans and things. I don't believe there were any semi-trucks that came into that loading area for Old Navy.
Got it. Thank you, Charlie. I think that was all my questions.
Very good. Thank you. And Commissioner Zepko? You're muted. Still muted.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
No comments from me. Thank you.
Commissioner Chee.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all. I missed the September session, unfortunately, so trying to catch up a little bit here. I had a few questions around vehicle and bicycle... I had a few questions around vehicle and bicycle circulation. If you can bring up the bike circulation map again, that would be really helpful. Great, thank you. So I noticed, just, you know, kind of taking a step back and looking at this, there are a lot less lines that appear here than on the pedestrian map. I was wondering if we could walk through what a typical bike trip would be or bike experience would be. So say we're coming from the east over the bridge, so we come over here into the, exactly around the bridge, and then into this new plaza area. And then we want to go shopping at the grocery store. So what happens next? Like, say we want to get as close to the entrance as possible because we're going to have some heavy bags that we need to load into a bike afterwards. Can you walk me through what happens next?
Yeah. So as you know, the building-to-building distance is, you know, sort of a modest street. It's about 50 feet. And there are storefronts on the eastern side, but there are generally not storefronts on the westerly side. The only communication into the building is kind of at the corner. And so we think that the storefront side will be sort of a, kind of a promenade subset of the pedestrian space. And then by the nature of needing to accommodate fire access occasionally, there's sort of a 20, 22-foot-wide flex zone. Of course, sometimes there may be, you know, a couple hours a day, there may be a special event that takes place at the small stage, in which case you'd have to dismount earlier and walk your bike a little bit longer. But in very general terms, you know, there's a fairly large, kind of a multi-use space that includes people walking, biking, a certain amount of, you know, loose tables and chairs and things like that. So we, I think that someone biking is more likely going to be on this side away from the storefronts. And then, of course, we have bike parking here and bike parking over on this side. And there's also the bike racks underneath the stairs that the city put in. And we're replacing the ribbon racks that are on this side with new staple racks for the bike committee.
Okay, great. So just to clarify, this may be too early a time to answer this question, but would bikes be allowed to ride through the promenade area or would it be pedestrian only?
You know, I think that, as you know, so much of these kinds of uses are temporal. I mean, they're, I could imagine, you know, if, as we talk about within the team, we want, you know, Saturday and Sunday afternoons and many times to be quite busy, right? Because that's the lifeblood and it's kind of the heart of Emeryville and wonderful retail space. So I could imagine that there might be, you know, an hour or two a day where you're less likely to bike all the way to the bike racks. But for the most part, I think there's going to be the ability, the space away from doors and storefronts. And, you know, this is a fairly sizable space that you can bike at a reasonable speed all the way to the grocery.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, next part I'd like to check out is if we're coming on Shellmount from the south.
South.
Yeah, exactly. And then, so we'd come up, and what does the diamond mean there?
You know, I don't know. Do you remember, Eric, what that means, the diamond?
It was an old known for just knowing where a crossing was occurring.
I see.
Okay. And so we'd come up there and then basically come onto a sidewalk, is that right?
Yeah, I think that, as you may know, this area is somewhat space-constrained, so you'd have to walk your bike over on this side.
Great. Okay, great. And then, last question on that is, coming from the north, southbound on Shellmount, what happens coming into the store?
Coming southbound, you wait for the light and then you communicate across, with the right-turn lane having been reallocated to the bike way, there's a shorter crossing. And then you join up, you rise up to sidewalk height and you join the multi-use path to Bay Street and to the bridge.
Okay. And so at that point, if cars were coming in and making that right turn there, they would be in a separate lane north of the bikes, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. I think that's helpful. Next question on bikes is, I saw there was a recommendation from the city council about putting in some electric outlets for charging. Is that something that you've addressed or considered?
We've talked about it in two places, but it's just an idea right now. One is, as you know, the city put in three pairs of four racks in this area underneath the stairs. And we've wondered whether, if the city wanted to, whether you might have some kind of a share-bike corral at this location, being that it's so close to Bay Street. But it's an idea, we're happy to work with the city on it, if that makes sense. The other thing is that just alongside the greenway, we have, within the garage, we're going to create an enclosure for employees to park. And there could potentially be electric charging within that sort of larger, long-term, secured bike parking space.
Okay, great. And then on the ramps, up to the parking garage or parking area, do you have a sense of how many car trips a day would be anticipated coming into this store?
Oh, on this one here?
Yeah, or, you know, either per ramp or in total.
Credit, Eric, do you know?
I don't think we have the answer to that. I think that's for the traffic.
Well, yeah, and I think that's part of the parking, excuse me, the traffic study and data that's coming in, which is being done, but I haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
That'll be, I think, like Minru said, that will be available for the next meeting.
Okay, great. And then just one last question, I think, at this point for me. Is there, this is motivated by a comment that my child made, is there any play equipment currently envisioned for the play areas, or sorry, the plaza areas?
You know, it's an interesting puzzle. We have, for example, if you just look here, we have the grand stair that is currently there, as you know, that pushes out a bit. Then we still are wiggling fire access through. So a lot of it is kind of streetscape plaza-like, where you have to be able to accommodate fire. And so we have kind of loose tables and chairs. So we're going to have an easier time setting out cornhole and, you know, giant chests and things like that, that you can move out than literally physically putting something. So we're, you know, we have a new building and we have to do stormwater treatment, so that takes a little slice of this area here. We want to have a modest stage. So so far, we don't, we don't have, you know, fixed play equipment. But we do think that it would be a fun place for kids to run around and, you know, eat together, take things from the dining terrace down to the streetscape. And again, I think there's sort of a game zone between this court and the kind of 100% corner that could well be more family-oriented.
Great, thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Graham, questions for the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I see a lot of improvements. Thank you so much. One of the questions I have is, see, we have two ramps for entrance and one for exit. Is there any reason behind that? Can you hear me?
Craig, do you want to try that?
Sure. I couldn't hear you very well. I heard something about an entrance, but I didn't hear.
Yeah, we have two ramps entering to the roof parking and one exit. Is there any reason behind that?
Well, Eric, you can speak to this too, but to only have one entrance would just create too much of a choke point. Plus, we want to have two entrances to distribute the traffic. We don't want everyone going in one place. And neither does the grocery. That way, there's multiple ways to get in. And then when you exit, that takes everybody out, you know, quickly out to Shellmount. But having two entrances, that helps distribute the traffic between Aloney and then the new entrance. We'd hate to have everyone go down and just go to one entrance, even if you could handle it traffic-wise, because it just, it takes away from the energy and the connectivity in bringing everybody into Bay Street at different locations.
Okay, thank you so much. In general, I think like pedestrians and moving objects, objects doesn't work together. Do you think, is there any way that we relocate the north ramp somewhere else?
Again, I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
I would say, no, there isn't really, there really isn't any way, anywhere else that the northern ramp can or should be located. It's well situated.
Oh, yeah.
To bring, to bring folks in from Aloney Way. And like Craig said, I mean, the grocery store works very well with two ways in.
Right. Right. Okay, thank you. But I think like the area that people are, you made very nice changes, but the people are like coming from the bridge, they want to pass. I think that portion has some conflict. That was one question. The other one is, last one, we're talking about the southern parkings. Can we remove those? Do we need those? And keep the plaza? So we have a plaza on the south portion. Is there any way that we keep the plaza? I know you made a lot of changes, these are perfect, but I think those portions are a little wider and if we can keep those and just have the roof parking, is it possible to do that? Maybe have like a couple of ADA parkings? But I see you put about 14, 14.
Yeah, that's right, 14.
Yeah. Yeah, again, those are very important. I think whether it's, almost every grocery store these days has some sort of online delivery and ordering from customers. And it's very important to have at least some limited, and we've limited it quite a bit. The original ask was quite a bit more than this, so we've been able to cut it back to just the bare minimum.
If we can cut it more, we would be happier. Maybe half more, so we can have at least half of the plaza. And that's going to work very well with the floor of the elevator entrance we have, I think. The other question, when people go to second floor, they only can use the staircase and the elevator, right? Or you have a pedestrian crap too?
Correct. There's elevators and stairs.
That's it, right? And that's the exterior staircase, right?
Yes, yes, exactly. All of that is access from outside.
Okay, okay.
And it's worth noting that there's a good 15 feet in front of the elevator before that edge of, the edge of the parking. So there is, we're comfortable with that. There's plenty of space in there for folks that have carts, to accommodate multiple people with carts. So we're quite comfortable with that.
Okay. You think that too is enough, right? Okay, perfect. It doesn't rain much, but sometimes we have rain and having like the staircase, exterior staircase might be a problem in rain, but I'm sure you can figure something about that. And about the trees, we're going to remove the trees on the north side, right? Is there any way we can keep them?
We'll plan on replacing the trees. They were really planned and planted so close to the existing building, that's, would be hard for a new tree to really weather this kind of work.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Gitzel, any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. If we could go back to the bike traffic flow slide, that would be helpful. So, yeah, one of my concerns is with people making right turns from Aloney on to Bay Street. And I think it's great to see that you've divided the lanes approaching that, but, you know, a really common and dangerous accident is when motor vehicles right-hook a bicycle. And so I'm wondering what measures you might have taken to reduce that risk? Because I think that eastbound traffic, bicycle traffic is going to be particularly vulnerable to that. And I'm wondering what measures you looked into to kind of minimize that risk?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. So as it is today, Aloney has a stop sign at Bay, right? All the segments approaching it stop. So you have a stop sign. Hopefully, it'll be busier in terms of walking than it currently is, so we may have to wait for one person to walk across. Then, working with our traffic engineer, we have a driveway kind of a form where the transition, this 10 feet which protects the multi-use path from the street, rises up about six to eight inches. There's a little bit of an up slope towards the structure over the, over the best concrete. So as you're making, you've stopped, and then you proceed and you make the right, and you're going up a bit. So all those things are cues to, you know, that you go slow. You're not, it's not, it's not like you're free-flowing, make a turn, and oh, by the way, you weren't paying any attention. So that's kind of what we've talked as a team about, trying to slow the speeds, get people, when they stop, to be aware and proceed slowly.
And are there any other measures? Because I've seen plenty of times when people do a Hollywood stop and, or that separation earlier slide you had, where you've got that really nice-looking little grass piece and then a crosswalk going in between them, it's actually a little bit of a visual obstacle and it would make somebody who's about to make a right turn maybe not as aware of some bicycle traffic or pet traffic as they might need to be.
To your, to your point, I can say in this meeting that it won't be planted with something that would come up to, you know, if you're sitting, I mean, if you're sitting in a car, whatever's planted there will be below your view, so. It wouldn't even be as tall as the wheels of a bike, shall we say.
Yeah, okay. And just one other question is, you've got two bike parking areas right near the entrance to the store. How many spaces overall, or how many bikes overall, do you think this would be accommodating?
Right now, we're showing seven of the kind of staple racks, right? The kind of the square-ish racks, and they're shown three and a half feet apart. So the outside ends would be available for cargo bikes. If there aren't already bikes doubled up between those three and a half foot spaces, a cargo bike will fit between it. So as you know, Emeryville allows the racks to be up to 30 inches together, but we think that's too close because it limits the flexibility of how it can be used. So we were thinking about that. We've angled them so that if somebody has a trailer or something, that it's possible to also park there. Then on the other side, that's near the elevator, we have a few fewer spaces right now. You know, Center Cal has, is going to be operating this, so if we're lucky enough to have more users, we can probably add another, you know, couple racks in the same system in both directions.
Okay. Because I'm sure you guys have probably looked at Berkeley Bowl because that's not far. And they have about 16 racks. And then on the other side of the parking lot, but not very far, another five or six racks. And so, and those are often pretty full.
Great.
And I just, I think that that's an important point, particularly given that you're going to have like the Emory project coming online with 500 housing units. And the easiest way to get from the Emory to where your store will be, will be the, via bicycle, is certainly easier than going there by car.
Absolutely.
And quicker than going there on foot. So that capacity might not be bad. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gitzel, Mr. Mendez, your questions?
Yeah, I have a question. If you could maybe go to the next page, the vehicular. Um, yeah, I have a question. If you could maybe go to the next page, the vehicular circulation page? Yeah, so um, you mentioned that um, that it's desirable to have two entrances into the grocery store. But when considering um, the parking for the grocery store, um, did you ever consider that the second entrance is actually maybe possibly that the parking structure that's already existing? You're already showing uh, vehicular circulation to that parking structure. Has um, have those spaces uh, been considered as, because I assume that, that's probably gonna be also used, um, since there's an parking access that goes directly to, uh, yeah, right there. That's a really convenient, you know, access as well. So um, I guess my question is, did you consider that as maybe possibly your second entrance? And possibly, the possibility of eliminating that north entrance?
Um, I'll, I'll speak to it. Um, when we, when we first started working on this, we considered all factors in terms of access and how we could, how we could attract a grocer, because um, you know, they all have specific requirements um, and needs, and, and it's always a balancing act. It's, it's, it's to try to meet the needs of the grocer or the tenant to get them interested to come. And then also the balance of, of, of the existing parking and access. And it's, it's something that we've studied greatly. Uh, our traffic engineers have as well. So we really rely a lot on traffic engineers and, and the science of it all. But this is, this is a requirement um, for the grocer. So i- it's something that we've studied, we've looked at all angles, and, and we think this is the best plan.
Okay, um, I think that was it. The other questions were already asked by other commissioners. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Have I asked all the commissioners at this point? Did I skip anybody? Okay, if I did, give me a holler. I have uh, about four questions for you guys. So in the teaser parking, in our packet, there was inserted an alternative uh, option for teaser parking that had the parking angle. And then a loop going around in front of the store, uh, where we didn't have the three-way hammerhead turn. Um, was there a reason we weren't presented with that tonight? Are you no longer thinking of that? If you need to, I could bring that up out of my packet. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, no. We, we had studied that. In fact, we had studied it even before. Um, and again, with traffic consultants and engineers, one of the things is if you have that turnabout, you're actually, you're actually taking up more space um, for vehicular movement, and, and you're taking away from plaza space. And in the turnaround, you, you, you actually have to walk past or walk through the turnaround area to get into the grocery store. And it takes up, it just takes up additional space, um, that when we did all the engineering and asked our traffic consultants to look at it, uh, it just, we just didn't feel like it was the best plan for the property.
Okay. Um, so you're saying that this is probably going to be um, uh, online pickup? Is that still your intention at Mayans?
Uh, some of it, yeah. It'll, it'll be signed, it'll be signed very well for that, short-term parking and, and pickup.
And then what will be your enforcement mechanism for that? What would stop you from going to parking and shopping there and going over to Uniqlo? Because that's gonna be very convenient to Barnes and Noble, Uniqlo, and everything else. So what's gonna be your enforcement mechanism to make sure those are online pickups?
Well, um, if we, I mean, if we have to, we'll have, we'll have parking attendants out there and, and we'll uh, we'll have them, uh, you know, you can't just tow somebody the first time, but you'll have an, you'll have an attendant that'll leave a note. And then if it happens again, uh, you'll talk to them again. Um, but we're not concerned about that. I mean, I, I think it's gonna be very well signed, and uh, we will be watching it, and so will the grocer.
Okay, well, I would recommend that you just call it parking, um, and don't misrepresent it that it's online, because over at Public Market, they have loading zones, and they are constantly used for all kinds of parking. No one pays any attention to it. So I think all those spaces are gonna basically just be base street parking, and that's the way, as a commission, I'm really looking at this project, because it's, to me, it's not teaser parking, it's just parking. And you guys made the case that you needed to get the grocer in there, and you know, we're not really happy with that, but because the plaza that you created is rather nice, nice, I'm willing to, to accept that, that it's just base street parking. Um, the other thing I want you guys to consider is, when I was over there today using the bridge, I happened to notice two bicycles coming off the bridge and heading through Bay Street. They had no intention of stopping at Bay Street. What they did is they used the street as they should. And when they reached um, Shellmount from the Loney, they took a lap and went over to the Bay Trail. So, um, and Commissioner Zepco might want to, um, uh, Commissioner Chafe, I mean, might wanna speak to his work. She has children. But as a, a bike commuter and a person who gets around strictly by bicycle, I'm not gonna use a double track. Uh, I think two-way cycle tracks confuse drivers and confuse bikers. And I would prefer to see just a eastbound bike lane on the south side, and that the people coming off the bridge, going through and touching either Shellmount North or um, the Bay Trail, just use the lane, turn left. I don't like bicycles having to transition from pedestrian to, to rider. You would never ask the car to get out and, you know, push a button or do anything. So my feeling is, I like the separated pedestrian zone. I like, you know, the bicycles going east, but I think bicycles coming off the bridge, heading to the Bay Trail or Shellmount Street should be allowed and encouraged to use traveling internally. Because at some point, a bicycle's gonna need to turn right. If you're in a double um, two-way cycle track, then they have to act as pedestrian passing in front of the crosswalk. So just a suggestion, um, that that could, that should actually be saved for another time. But I just wanted to tell you, I saw bicycles using that way. And I think the other question we answered for you earlier, so I think that's all I have. And in case, unless anyone has any other questions, follow-ups, we can move this on to the public comment section. Okay, seeing them. So Charlie, what does our lineup look like for public speakers?
I got muted. We have uh, three raised hands among the attendees, and uh, four raised hands among the attendees. And I also received one online speaker card for this item. That card is from somebody who has just raised their hand, so we won't need to read the online comment card if she makes those comments verbally. So I'll call on the first speaker, and I'll time each one for uh, three minutes. The first one is Bobby Lee. So go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Hey, uh, yeah, just uh, good evening, commissioners. Really excited for this grocery store. It's sorely needed. And you know, again, greatly appreciative to the applicant and their team for extensively engaging with us as residents and the, and the HOA at Bay Street very early on in this process. So they're to be commended for that. Um, you know, I continue to have concerns with the narrowing of Aloney Way, particularly with the high volume holiday and weekend traffic. And one suggestion I'd like to make is to leave that right lane on Aloney Way, uh, on the south side of Aloney in place and install removable floating islands or parklets that would be removed during um, high traffic times. That could be one way to get vehicles off of Shellmount and to keep Shellmount moving. Also have a continued concern, other folks have expressed this, about the pedestrian bicycle vehicle conflict on Aloney at Bay Street, uh, near that north parking ramp. Um, you're looking forward to seeing what that Fair and Pierce study says, but uh, there, there will always be a conflict if, without some sort of traffic control uh, at that intersection. One thing uh, also around circulation is with Uber and Lyft drop-off and pickups, and this is a larger issue, not just isolated to the grocery store. Um, but right now, a lot of Ubers and Lifts either stop in that right lane on Aloney, or use that south driveway that exists right now, the south side of the grocery store, just stop in the middle of the lane for pickup and drop-off. And I think that uh, it's an issue, it has to be solved, the engagement of the city with Uber and Lyft, and, and along with the applicant as well on this one. I also have a concern with the intersection of the south side uh, grocery ramp, um, closest to the Shellmount Street, uh, there, you know, I, I envision there will be a backup on a Shellmount Street, uh, when vehicles are waiting to make a left from Shellmount into the grocery store ramp, and then exiting the main retail garage onto the driveway of Shellmount Street. That's something I'd be curious to see if Fair and Pierce is studying, um, and I hope is reviewed for safety and circulation. One question for the applicant, will the loading zone driveway pulling from Shellmount Street be blocked off during business hours to prevent shoppers from using that loading zone area as a cut-through or shortcut to the mall or the grocery store? A question for staff would be that bus stop relocation in the right-term pocket on, uh, uh, from Shellmount to Aloney, will this be large enough for a bus pullout? Um, you know, putting on my ETMA board member hat on here, I just wanna know more about details about this, when, when it becomes available. Commissioner Simmons, uh, made a comment earlier about truck parking. Actually, currently, uh, there are semi-trucks that do park on the open median in Shellmount to load and unload in that median. And I don't know where they're headed to, but just a heads up that they do it today. Um, and lastly, I, I would love to see Public Works address the commission and city council about uh, how these changes, the grocery store will affect the Fortieth and Shellmount Street Traffic Signal Coordination Plan, and also the holiday season uh, traffic light coordination plan. Uh, thank you very much.
Okay, um, next speaker is Chris, Christine Romano. Go ahead, please.
Um, thank you commissioners for listening to me. Um, I live on Bay Street, and I attended the meeting you guys had back in October and last week's presentation by the um, planners. And I wanna say I, I love the idea of having a grocery store so close and so convenient. Um, a lot of what you presented today looks familiar from the other meetings, but one thing that surprised me was this proposal to change the location of the current bus stop. That actually surprised me. I hadn't seen that before, and I, and I, I wish more attention and more time had been given to that proposal, cuz I think it's a, I, 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 I'd like to know more about um, the rationale behind that, that change. Um, I, the, moving the bus stop to a place where there's a park, um, that actually does sound more convenient for riders and possibly more safe. But I, I have some concerns, namely just, we're, we're hoping that this grocery store will bring an increase in traffic, particularly northbound traffic on Shellmount. And I, we've, someone already raised a point in an earlier meeting about traffic flow and how congested Shellmount might become as a result, and removing an entire turn lane is, or entire lane is only gonna make traffic worse. That's, that's tough for, you know, Bay Street residents that have to use that right turn to get to their resident parking. And it, and someone else brought the point that it may or may not impact the, the experience of bus riders who have to use that street and who need to keep bus schedules on time. So that, that's my concern, and I just, I hope the commissioners will take that into account when, when looking into that proposal. And then I also wanted to voice uh, an agreement with a point made by Commissioner Keller about bicycle traffic. Um, if bicycles are asked to, you know, go through a pedestrian zone, they're very unlikely to dismount and walk their bikes to the zone. They're, they're probably just gonna pedal on through, and so I think the planners need to take, you know, actual bike habits into account and, and the safety of uh, maybe some potential bike pedestrian conflicts. Um, otherwise, I, I thank you guys for your continued uh, attention to this, this grocery store, and I'm excited to see the changes on Bay Street.
Okay, next speaker is Rod Henme. Go ahead, please.
Yes, uh, this is Rod Henme. I'm an Emeryville resident and an architect, design director for a sixty-person open-based firm. First, I want to say, uh, I think these, uh, the changes in these plans are fantastic. This team listened to the comments made by both the planning commissioners and residents at the last meeting, and they responded in an appropriate manner. I think uh, the large plaza space that's now provided in the center is a very strong solution. Um, I think the two entries, um, with the one, uh, one exit is also a very good solution. I think they've uh, made a very uh, feasible, um, workable uh, traffic solution for the parking, and, and I, and I, and I think that's great. Um, one, uh, I don't rec, I don't uh, like the staff recommendation for the uh, additional drive at the south because of the comments provided. It takes more paving area. But I wondered uh, whether it would be possible to uh, at least explore eliminating only three parallel parking spaces. Because it's a small number, it would uh, allow for more paving, and particularly if the street were tweaked to the south, that would allow for a larger um, plaza area in front of the store. That would get lots of southern sun and would be very pleasant. Um, if you wouldn't mind teeing up the east elevation, um, I'll get to that in a minute, um, the, while you're doing that. Um, the recessed entry, or rather, at the entry, I'd suggest that it be recessed. Right now, it's, it's flat. And um, getting, can you change to the east elevation possible?
You know, Rod, I don't, I don't have that. Uh, that was part of Maru's deck, when she, when she went through it, cuz our focus was on the changes, but, but yeah, yeah.
That's fine. So I'd suggest trying to recess the entry to get more depth and make it more welcoming. On the east elevation, um, the center stage and the grand stair, uh, you have uh, three central bays in the east elevation, um, which on, which is a good response to start to recognize that importance of that axis. Uh, as you come down the stairs, you're focused on that, the stage is there. But right now, I think it's, it's, it's just three windows and a canopy and a blank wall. It's rather, I think it's a little insipid. I'd suggest you really try and soup that area, the elevation up, so that it becomes this outstanding background to the stage and becomes a real signature piece. Um, in terms of the tree removal, absolutely support the tree removal from the, from the north. Trees three foot from a building are totally inappropriate. Uh, they should never have been planted there. Um, they, they won't, you know, they're, they'll just, they'll just die. And then finally, um, the trucks, I ride my bike by here every day on the way to work. I have seen semi-trucks parked in the middle of the street. So that, that does happen. Um, uh, and, and it's great that you have an appropriate solution to bring the semi-trucks into the, into the site uh, to be able to service the building. Thank you.
All right, and then the final speaker is Lisa Finley. I've also, I would note that I also received an online speaker card from her, so I will not read that, because I assume she will make the same comments. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I will, Charles. Thank you. And um, I just wanna echo uh, Rod's uh, comments. And I was one of the owner residents of Emeryville's that, that had several critical comments about this proposal in the previous study session. And I just wanna commend the development team, the architect, and the landscape architects in particular, for their responsiveness to our concerns. I think the new design looks great with taking into account the various uh, more minor things that have been discussed this evening, and I just wanna thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
Let me just double check my, uh, don't have any more online speaker cards. I do want to note, however, that the commission also received several emails about this project. Two from the applicant, with a total of six uh, comment letters in support, mostly, I believe, from a tenants or prospective tenants of the Bay Street Center. Uh, one from John Sherman, and another one uh, from Robert Pierce.
I can say we did, and I can say I, I at least have received them.
They were addressed to all, all those emails were addressed to all the planning commissioners, so you all should have gotten them.
Okay, very good. We will close the segment of public comment and bring it back to the commission. And I'll start from the top of my screen and start with Vice Chair Mendez.
Great, thank you so much. Um, yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I, I'm in agreement with um, with some of the residents saying that this is a huge improvement from the last time when we saw it. Um, I really do appreciate that you went ahead and closed off most of the plaza area, so that it could be a really great event space, family-friendly. I, I can't wait for that to, to be open and to be able to come here and meet up with friends and um, just use the space. My concern is still with the traffic or the entrance to the north. I understand that, you know, the grocery store has some demands, and this one's a really important demand that uh, that you're trying to work into this very restricted space. So if we must keep that entrance, my suggestion would be to, and I know this is coming later with the traffic study, but I with the traffic study, but I would really, really push for having some kind of traffic controller, traffic light, or having, even having some, one of those crossing lights that alert, you know, people when they're coming and crossing that vehicular lane. I just, you know, I could see on both sides of that entrance, we have these like spaces where people are going to be hanging out. Even in one of your renderings, you know, you see children in your renderings, and I could just see, you know, somebody, maybe a child just running across and, you know, we don't want anything unfortunate to be happening here. And I really think that we should consider this pedestrian and bicycle first, and the vehicles come basically last. So we want to try to make this as best possible for pedestrians and for bicyclists. Like Commissioner Gazzoni said, that, I think it was Commissioner Gazzoni, that there's going to be people coming across the bridge because there's a huge development right across the train tracks, and so the easiest way to get here is going to be through that pedestrian bridge. A lot of the users too that I see are going to be using this grocery store are the residents of Bay Street, which, you know, they would not be driving here, they would be walking here or biking here. And so I just want us to push that even further and just make sure that that intersection there is as safe as possible that we can make it for pedestrians, for children, for bicyclists. Let me see, the other comments about the trees, yeah, I think removing the trees is okay and it's acceptable as long as we do replace them a one-to-one. And I would agree that replacing them with native trees would probably be better. And I would even suggest that we maybe get involvement of the Aloney community if we can to see if maybe they have any suggestions to what type of, you know, vegetation or trees might be a good replacement, since this is a memorial to the Aloney tribe. And then as far as, let me see, I'm trying to go down the comments and issues to be considered, the materials and color that are proposed, I'm okay with that, I haven't problems with that. And then the bus stop, I think the bus stop, the new location that was proposed by the staff, I don't see any issues with that. I think it is better to have it closer to the park for safety and for visibility. So those are all my comments. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And Commissioner Gazzoni?
Okay. Yeah, a lot of what was just said, I would affirm, and I do think it's really great that this shows a lot of improvement from what we saw before, and I appreciate all your work and creativity in solving some of the problems there. I think it's good that you listen to the community and some of the letters that we saw, I think it's really nice to see that these changes are attracting locally owned businesses. I think that really is a big plus. And I think that, I really emphasize the traffic issues. I think a lot of this has gotten stronger, but traffic issues and safety for bike and pedestrian passing through this area is important. The city made a major investment in the bridge for east-west traffic, partly, I think, to benefit this area and also to pass through further, so I'd like to make sure that this does not impinge on that. One further, I think that hopefully the traffic study will give more detail on how to make that right hook situation I was talking about safer. I also think that where you have the east-west traffic with bikes and pedestrians, it's probably good to have some differentiation so that you don't have a lot of situations with pedestrians wandering into the way of bicycles and accidents happening there. If there's, if you resolve the ambiguity so people know where they should be, that will minimize that sort of thing. Moving the bus stop, I think is great, and because it does make for a safer place, I would rather be in that bus stop. And also, there's other, the holiday traffic situation, hopefully that is taken into account in the traffic study as well because that area does become a big traffic jam quite a bit in November and December. And other than that, I would say a lot of what the changes I've seen look like real improvements, and I appreciate them.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Brown?
Perfect. Thank you for all of the revisions, a lot of improvement. I think I still think the northern ramp entrance would be a safety and health problem for the community. If we can consider relocating or removing it, that would be perfect. And also for the teaser parking on the southern part, I think in my opinion, if we can compromise to make it have maybe seven parking stalls and have that portion of the plaza over there, that would be a perfect change. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chee?
Thank you so much. Many of my comments have already been addressed. I love this project overall. I think that having a grocery store so centrally located will, if it is inviting to pedestrians and bicyclists, decrease carbon emissions because people will have to travel less distance by car to get their groceries. So that's really exciting. I do share concerns voiced by Commissioner Mendez and others that right now, despite the great open space that you've envisioned here, it still feels like bike and ped circulation is a little bit secondary to vehicles. And I again want to echo what Commissioner Mendez said about the safety of the northern ramp. To me, this is a beautiful example of sort of Europeanification of the area where you'd have like a pedestrian mall, super inviting a really special space that we don't often see in this area. I think we're all trying to work towards this type of space, but it's honestly kind of ruined by the northern ramp right now. As others have mentioned, I have children, I envision where they, as they grow up, can bike by themselves safely. The new bridge is amazing, and the connectivity to the Bay Trail, amazing. Unfortunately, right now, we have large metal vehicles going across the path of where they need to bike, and so I just wouldn't feel safe sending them through there and having to make judgment calls about whether they can cross by themselves or not. I like that you're inviting bikes into the pedestrianized area. However, I do see the need for there to be quick and easy and obvious connections through the streets as well, give people choices. So I would support the comments about making sure that there is bike infrastructure created and emphasized on Aloney going on to Shellmount as well. Let me see what else here. So again, just going back to my question I had about space to play on, this was something that my daughter spontaneously brought up, and I think that, I totally understand that you can't build something that's permanent in this space, but I do think that there are a lot of playful options for other types of recreation. So for example, the local school in Emeryville had these giant blue kind of like foam blocks that they were able to leave outside for long periods of time, and it's kind of a loose parts play where people can spontaneously pick them up and build large structures with them. I think something like that could actually work really well in this space. I also want to commend you on bringing the street and sidewalk to the same level. Where that exists over by the public market, it just gives a completely different feel to the area, and I think it's really inviting for pedestrians. In terms of the tree removal, I wanted to support the staff proposal on the condition of approval on redoing the signage in Memorialize Park. Also encourage the use of native species in the park. I was doing some Googling and actually found a reference to early plans for the park, and it said that native landscaping should be included in the palette of landscape concepts and chosen plant materials within the landscape as memory. I was also going to ask if you could bring in some Aloney voices to contribute to the choices made for the park. One idea I had in general for landscaping is, it would be neat if you could put in some fruiting trees. I think it would tie in the concept of grocery to the area, it'd be something kind of fun. And then finally, the bus stop, I like that there's a new change suggested. I think it helps with making it visual. I'd encourage you to reach out to AC Transit or others involved with placing buses on islands on Telegraph, for example, because I know there have been some like bridge options created there to enable sharing of space with bicycles, could learn some lessons from that. I want to say thank you for accommodating cargo bikes in your bike spacing for the parking areas, and I think having the electrical outlets in the long-term parking makes a lot of sense. I'm not sure where the closest bike share station is right now, but it would make a lot of sense to have one right there. And then in terms of the traffic study, I'll be looking out for how many car trips are anticipated per day, what that looks like in terms of a realistic expectation for how many cars and vehicles are going to be trying to share this space. So thanks very much. I'll end there.
Thank you much. And Commissioner Simons?
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you so much for all the excellent presentations and for all the other great comments from fellow commissioners. I'm just running down my list here. So I'm disappointed to hear that the plaza will also be the fire lane. I think one of the best things about Bay Street is all the kind of unusual structures, that it's really fun to see kids running and jumping around in the current plaza that exists, and I'm disappointed we can't replicate this in the new area. So anything we can do to bring it closer to that would be great. I'm really excited about raising up Bay Street. I think the Bay Street and Aloney Way intersection is really dangerous. I don't know if it's because people are frustrated sitting in traffic, or if the intersection is just a bit too big, but I feel like I very frequently see frustrated drivers there. And I think this is only going to get worse as we bring more people in and unfortunately more cars, and just anything we can do to calm the intersection is just really, really vital if we want to make this a safe place for everybody who lives, works, and plays in Emeryville. So if we could raise up more of the street, maybe raise up some of Aloney Way as well, that would be great. We just really need to slow it down. I think the bus stop was really under discussed tonight, and I think I'm really excited about this, so I'd love for you to follow up on the design you're sketched out. I think this section of Shellmount is actually quite scary. There's northbound buses moving right across the bus lane to get to the bus stop, there are cars turning right onto Aloney Way, there are clearly very large trucks heading southbound, turning left into the mall. And, you know, on our early pandemic daily tour to Emeryville bike ride, I often found this one of the more stressful and scary sections, so anything we can do to make the area feel safer sounds really, really great. Happy removing the trees seems fine, we should definitely plant new species. And then just one final thing that we didn't discuss, I think the northwest corner of the plaza, where there's that, I guess it's the round thing we can see there, I don't love that space, I don't think it's very activating. If we think we're going to get a lot more people into the plaza, I'd be reconsidering how that space is used to make it more useful and just enjoyable to be in for pedestrians. Thanks so much for all your work.
Thank you. And Commissioners Oko?
Actually, great presentation. I actually really second a lot of the comments of my other fellow commissioners. Just to quickly go over it, I do love the addition of the grocery store. I feel like that's such a welcome thing or addition to that area. I am a little bit concerned as well about like the safety in that area, just in terms of like how trafficked it is, and I would want to make sure that like the way this is being created really does involve, like has pedestrians in mind. That circular space at the top northwest of the screen, I also don't feel is incredibly engaging if we're already having like a garden space. I would want to see even more flora and fauna and have that be kind of inclusive of the fact that it's like there's a creek bed there as well, and I think that something to kind of have the community be connected to the history of the area would be beautiful as well. But other than that, I'm really excited for the plans here and really appreciate the time and thoughtfulness in terms of updating the plans, and with that, I have no other comments. Thank you so much for the update.
Thank you very much. So I guess it's my turn. So I just wanted to express thanks for what you've done, and I think what you've done is a vast improvement. I will never be in support of your teaser parking, but I'm willing to let that go. I think putting the plaza in has benefited not only the community, but I think it benefits your project as well, especially that staircase coming down to pedestrian plaza from the food terrace is very good. So I think you guys have overall really done a lot of work, but I do believe that you do still have a little work left to do. First, I want to go with the bus stop. I think the staff recommendation is the way to go with that, and I just want to address Ms. Romano's remarks about the right turns and et cetera. And the thing that oftentimes people who primarily use their car and consider traffic as the main thing is that the more people we get in buses, the less cars are going to be in conflict or on the roads with you. And I think to make people take the buses, to make it less as attractive as using the car, and so putting the bus stop at this location as opposed to the back end of the store, next to where the dumpsters are, and just a real unappealing place, is going to be much more attractive to people, and we need to get more people back to using public transit. So I think it's a transit first, and then the autos that we need to sit in. And I think the additional part of that is putting the bus there as staff recommended is that it's going to now enlighten that space that two commissioners have brought up as the dead space. So I think having the bus offload there and have people waiting there is going to activate that space, and then put more demand up, we do something there that makes that place more attractive. So I'm 100% behind in the bus there, and I think that's the way we need to go. I have to call you guys out on the northern ramp. I think that a number of the commissioners have expressed a concern with that. I think if we eliminate the northern ramp, we now have a huge plaza space that in near the fire pit, we can put a place space, and you can make that space much more usable to children and et cetera. I think it's very, it negates the whole area there by letting cars come through there. It just becomes a driveway in which pedestrians can sit on either side of. And so I want to just bring to the commission's attention and to let you know, I've done some physical research in the Bay Area, actually Oakland. I've gone to four local grocery stores that have rooftop parking. I've gone to Whole Foods in downtown Oakland. That store has 150 spots on its garage. It has one entrance and one exit coming off to Harrison Street. I believe it may not be Harrison, but I recall what it's called, but it has one entrance and one exit, and it's parking 150 cars. Sprouts on Broadway has 140 spaces on their garage. They have one entrance and one exit off of 30th Street. The Safeway on 51st Street, which is a very large store, has 160 parking spaces. They have one entrance and one exit. And the brand new Whole Foods in Tamaascale area has 135 spaces in the underground parking, and it is the most constrained, scary, steep ramp that I've ever been on on my bike. And not only does that park the 135 grocery stores, it's also the entrance for the, what is that, five stories, seven stories of apartments? So there is examples right within this area of grocery stores with rooftop parking that park more cars than what you're suggesting, and they have one entrance and one exit. So I'm not sold that that northern exit or entrance is possible. And then for stacking, I've done some small calculations in using your parking space size on the roof, and considering the ramp and the part of Bay Street that comes in, you can stack 12 to 15 cars in that. And I don't think there's going to be a time when there are 12 to 15 cars waiting in that grocery store. So you have stacking space on that ramp to get into the lot. So I'm not sold that that northern ramp is necessary. If it is necessary and your tenant is insistent on it, then I would be insistent that, like Commissioner Mendez said, that there's a traffic signal put at Bay Street and Aloney, and that it be synchronized with Bay Street with Aloney and Shellmount Street. And that's the only way that I could see having cars cross that area that you guys are proposing to be so pedestrian-friendly and so bike-friendly, is to me, it just doesn't get a conflict space. And if it's important for you to have it there, then I think it's important to put a traffic light there, but I'm not sold on that. And what I'd like to do is just take a straw poll of the commissioners, so you guys go with a clear mind, but how many commissioners, if I raise a hand, think that the project would be better and preferable to you if the northern ramp was removed? And I, for one, think that should be. And I, for one, think that should be. So I'm seeing four hands, which is the majority of the commissioners. So unless you come back with a sales, that that is absolutely necessary with four other grocery stores that park more cars than your plans proposing doesn't need the space, then I think you better probably give your project a break. But that's just my take on it as it is right now. And I think it's, it's a, it's a bone of contention. And I think it's, you guys have done a wonderful job. I don't want to negate that at all. I'm willing to accept your teaser parking for whatever you think it's usable for. But I just think the northern ramp really lessens the quality of parking. So with that, I don't have any other comments. I like the whole project. And I'd like to just ask the commission if there are any other comments that they'd like to make before we move on. And one other thing for staff is I think the trees should be replaced. It should be done with native. I think the finishes are fine. I like what they're doing to the building itself. And did staff get everything they need?
I believe so. Bieru, anything further?
I know. Thank you.
And Chair Calhoun, you might just check into the applicant?
I was just going to do that.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
No, that's okay. I was just going to do that. But you always get to remind me. And so, did the applicant need anything answered?
No. Appreciate everyone's comments. You know, we share the concerns about wanting it to be absolutely safe. And I love your, I love everyone's positive attitude about, about having so many cars and pedestrians and bicycles come to Bay Street because that would be awesome. That would be awesome because right now, none of that's happening. And in fact, we're, in fact, we're going the other way with tenants. So we're really excited about the plan. And I know we'll all, we'll all look at the traffic study when it comes in. Like I've been saying since the beginning that, you know, we got to let the traffic study and the science help guide us, right? With some of the things that we might need to do. So when that comes in, that may impact, you know, for sure, some of the things that we need to do. So we'll look forward to looking at that when it comes in.
All right, very good. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time and efforts. Look forward to this coming back next month. And does anyone feel they need a break? Show a hand? Should we move on? Would you like to take a break? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break again. We'll come back at 9:50. Get on with item 9.3? 9.3, Christie Avenue mixed use project.
And that will be me again, Chair. May I share my screen?
Please do.
Can I have a recusal on this first?
Yes, oh, that's right. Thank you.
Okay, yes, I need to recuse myself from this because the, one of the parties involved is, is one of my employers.
So you have to leave the meeting altogether?
Yes.
And I, I can text you, Commissioner Guitsoni, at the end of this item, if you'd like to come back at the end for commissioner comments?
That sounds fine.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, very well. So this is a new project at the Christie Avenue, 5801 Christie Avenue site. This is a site not too far from the Bay Street project, right near I-80, behind Denny's and the gas station near Powell. The site area is about 3.76 acres. And this shows up close up. You can see that there are two existing buildings. The taller one is the one that we call Wells Fargo Building. And the one-story building has a number of tenants. And of course, there's a huge parking lot. As part of this project, both the buildings would be demolished. And just to get you oriented, this is I-80, Denny's, gas station, and this is Christie Avenue, and Shell Mount is right here. So in terms of project proposal, like I mentioned, in addition to the demolition of the existing buildings, there will be construction of three new buildings and a new public park. The table shows that what these three buildings are going to be. One is going to be a residential building accommodating 98 units, and it will reach a height of 123 feet. The second building is a research and development and office tower, which would be 463, nearly 464,000 square feet of commercial space. And this would have a height of 230 feet. Since it's an R and D building, you'll note that it's 13 stories and residential building is 12 stories. And, and the height difference is more than 100 feet. And this basically would accommodate a high floor-to-ceiling lens that are required for R and D buildings. The third building is the parking garage that will accommodate all the parking for both the residential as well as the commercial users. And it is 100 foot tall and will accommodate 748 parking spaces. To give you an idea, so this is sort of the site plan in terms of how these three buildings are located. I-80 is on your left, and this is Christie Avenue. Fronting Christie Avenue is the residential building in yellow. The parking garage is sited along I-80. And, and this in purple or blue is the R and D building. The public park is fronting what you see in green, and it fronts Christie Avenue. So this gives you a certain idea of the building elevations. So this is looking south. You can see from the site, looking south here, you, this is the I-80. The tall building is the R and D building. This is the garage building. And this is the residential building. So the tallest building is R and D. The second tallest is the residential, and the parking garage is a little shorter than the residential building. To look at these heights in the area context, this sort of gives you where the proposed building stands. So 230 is the R and D, the height of the R and D tower. And still lower than Pacific Park Plaza, which continues to remain the tallest building in our town. And, and the buildings, the commercial buildings on the other side of the freeway are kind of in the range between 150 feet and 200 feet. In terms of how the site is going to operate, the main entry and exit of the site is located here on the southern driveway, as you can see both in and out. In addition to that, the site also will be, you can enter into the site only through this northern driveway. And then you can go to the parking garage, access the parking garage through this as well as through the northern driveway. As you can see, there are two locations, two entrances to the parking garage. This kind of gives you a rough preliminary diagram much in the same way as the vehicles for service vehicles. So this is the loading area for the office building or the R and D building. And that is again, entry and exit on this side and entry only on the northern driveway. Again, the bicycles being, in terms of the access, is again being shown along the southern driveway. And this is sort of how the pedestrians can move around in the park as well as around the building. In terms of open space and also in terms of amenities, I've mentioned the park at the ground level. In addition to that, they are, and they are also providing three other kind of open spaces. One, what you see on the ground level in yellow or orange, this is the common open space for the residents of this building only, and that is required by our regulations. This is the upper level. This is actually the seventh level, the roof garage, the roof level of the parking garage that will be used for open space for the employees of the R and D building. Then what you see in hatched green here and here, that those are the proposals or the additional open space that, that have been proposed in order to meet some bonus points. And I will come back to this a little bit more later on. But this is just to kind of give you an idea of different open spaces in one diagram. So in terms of the residential density, this is in one of our most intense core of the city in terms of zoning. So the base density here is 85 units per acre, which goes up to 170 units per acre for bonus. They are proposing, so for what that calculates for the site of a little less than four acres is a base of 320 units and a bonus of 639 units. What they are proposing is 98 units. So the proposed density is 26 units per acre, and so it falls well within the base density. FAR base is 3.0 and bonus FAR that is permitted here is 6.0. The proposed FAR is 3.65, so the project will require 22 bonus points for FAR. In terms of height, the base height here is 75 feet, and bonus height is any height above 100 feet. So the two towers, the residential tower is 123 feet, and the R and D tower is 230 feet. So the project will require 100 points for height. So in terms of bonus points, half of them, as you know, come from, are meant for affordable housing. So for the residential portion, this calculates to 17 units that will be affordable units, four at very low income level, six at low income, and seven at moderate income. For the non-residential portion of the project, our regulations require that they pay increased affordable housing impact fee, and by increase, it's double. So to give you an idea, the current impact fees for R and D is $4.83 per square foot. So the increased fee would be double of that, which is $9.66. And for this project, at this rate, in terms of how much money the project will put in the affordable housing fees, it would be 4.5 million. The remaining 50 bonus points are regulations required that should come in terms of community benefits. And the way the applicant at this point has identified of obtaining these two bonus points are two ways. One is additional, as you say, open space. So what the applicant is proposing is to obtain 35 points for providing 10% of the site area as additional open space. And this additional open space is obtained by providing public open space inside the lobby of the R and D tower and under the overhang of the garage and also the public park area. The other way of obtaining the remaining 15 points is by making the residential building a zero net energy facility through provision of onsite energy in form of solar panels for the residential building and the associated parking that go with that. In terms of the unit mix for the residential units, we do have that requirements in terms of how many two and three bedrooms and how many, three bedrooms and how many studios. The proposal does comply with the unit mix that they are proposing, as you can see on the table. In terms of parking, the site lies in the transit hub overlay zone, which reduces all required vehicular parking by 50%. So the required residential parking for this project would come to 0 to 65 spaces. They are proposing 118 spaces. The required commercial, required parking for commercial users is 0 to 494 spaces, and they're providing 630 spaces. So the project needs a use permit to allow more parking than the maximum permitted for both residential and commercial users. Our regulations do allow a project applicant to propose more than the required parking, more than the maximum, maximum parking. And, and they can do that by demonstrating that additional parking is required to meet the anticipated demand and that the provision of more parking will not adversely affect transit, bicycle, or pedestrian access to site and will not result in an overdependence on cars. So these are the findings that the commission will need to make and the applicant will need to provide evidence that these findings can be made. Bicycle parking, short term for residential is five spaces. Uh, bicycle parking, uh, short term uh for residential is five spaces. Uh, proposal they are not showing at at this time, uh. Long term is ninety eight spaces, uh, they are showing an unspecified amount uh in inside the garage. Uh, for commercial short term, uh, the requirement is ninety spaces, uh, these are not being shown at this time. And for long term, uh, the requirement is ninety spaces as well. And they are showing an unspecified number uh in inside the uh parking garage. Uh, just as a note and a reminder for all of us that there is no transit hub overlay reduction for bicycle parking. Uh, since the intent of this overlay z- zone is to encourage alternative transportation, uh, such as bicycles. Okay, so we we are back to open spaces, so. The, there are four different type of open spaces that are applicable for this project. One is a residential common open space. And within that, there are some uh requirements for private open space and that would be in form of balconies, for example. And there is the requirements for common open space, and so this would be common open space for the residents of the building. And typically, you know, uh, different projects uh. Uh, provide that by either a community room or a gym or uh or facilities like that. But these are required by uh our regulations. And are for the residents of the apartment building or the residential building. Uh, then we have the commercial open space. So this is open space meant for the employees. Of uh the commercial tenants, so that means the employees of the R and D building. And the requirement is five percent of grow gross flow area uh of uh of the site. And or privately owned public open space. Then there is the public park requirement, uh, the general plan designates this site as other park opportunity site. That calls for a public park of at least half an acre. Uh. And the fourth is the additional public open space. So this is one of the ways that the applicant has proposed to obtain their bonus points. A provision of this additional open pu- open, additional public open space is optional. As the applicant can choose to obtain the required bonus points through other ways. So just to go back to this, uh, so the first, let's talk about the private residential open space. Uh, so the balconies, the private open residential spaces are not shown at this point, uh, yeah. And the residential common open space is uh this ground level uh open space. Then we have uh the R and D common open space and this is provided uh on the rooftop of the parking garage. Uh, and it's a combination and I will let the applicant uh walk us through that, what the amenities in these open spaces are. And then you have, and this red line that you see, the red circle that you see, is their half acre public uh park uh. Uh, site, so it's kind of shows that the public park that they are showing is a little bit bigger. Uh, than the half an acre public park. Then we have uh the additional open space and that's the hatched. So this is the lobby of the R and D building and and it will double also as a uh open space. In order to obtain community benefits. And they are also using overhang uh area here uh to provide uh community benefits in for in terms of additional open space. So uh, there, in terms of staff comment, comments, uh, Public Works had a number of comments regarding the proposed circulation. And their main concern was using uh the southernmost driveway as the main entry and exit for the site. Uh, they, uh, the staff feels that there are two intersections uh which are uh heavily trafficked. And to have a fr- a major entry and exit uh entrance here, which could free left and right uh turns. May be problematic. So what they are suggesting is to have instead a dry, uh, a main driveway or main entry exit driveway. That coincides with the control signal uh at Shell Roundway and um and Christie Avenue. The other comment that they are uh suggesting or recommending is relocation of the bus stop. Uh, just so that it is within the site in order to make uh the transit amenity, to improve the transit amenity uh here. In addition to that, uh, they are also, uh, they also commented that the scramble signal. Uh, is something that the transportational uh analysis, analysis that will be done as part of uh this project. Should really look into whether it will work at this location or no, no, or not. In addition to that, uh, they noted that uh. We would need to see uh language of what the site access easements. Uh, say in terms of what can be done, what, how can it be used, who can it be used by, et cetera, in order to ensure that. Any use of these easements are according to uh what they actually say. And this, this issue of what this easement say has uh come up for staff before at a prior project that was uh proposed on the site. And uh, we have not yet seen uh what these easement uh actually says, other than the fact that it is access easement. In addition, uh, other comments that staff had was that the applicant, uh, you know, needs to provide analysis and justification for exceeding. Uh, maximum uh minimum parking requirements for both residential and commercial users. Uh, if you give me a minute, the lights have turned off at City Hall and I'm going to turn on so that I'm not completely in dark here. Uh, the other comment was that the garage should be designed to be adaptable so that it can be converted into commercial. Or residential users, should the parking demand be reduced over time. Uh, these are buildings that have a lifespan over fifty plus years, so things can change over that lifetime. Uh, applicant needs to develop a plan that shows how the garage parking will function uh for residents, employees and guests. Uh, who will use which entrance, how will uh the parking be controlled within the garage. Uh, one small loading space is required for the residential building and must be provided within the building itself and not in the garage. Uh, bicycle parking plan needs to be for the, it be developed such that bicycle access is in all buildings and in all public spaces. Uh, it was noted that the active transportation plan that is currently being prepared uh by the city. May include a continuous pedestrian bicycle path running along the eastern side of the freeway. Connecting multiple properties for a north-south connection from sixty fifth to Powell Streets. Uh, so this uh project should also consider uh that. Uh, we also have comments regarding the open space and. And that is the proposal to obtain a portion of the bonus points, uh, thirty five out of fifty points. By providing a open space within the lobby of the uh office tower, uh, may be problematic for the following reasons. Space inside a private building may not be conducive to attracting the general public to use the space. And R and D tenants uh are typically concerned with privacy issues. Given that a public park is being provided in order to comply with the general plan requirements, uh, staff questions. The provision of additional open spaces, open spaces to obtain bonus points. There are several different ways and other ways of providing community benefits, including public improvements. Something that is needed in the area. And if this open space is for as a part of community benefits, uh, one needs to consider whether an indoor open space. Would be, no matter how, how it is designed, would be attractive. Say to a group of students from Emory High School. Or would that indoor uh open space would be attractive for service workers. Uh, who work at the Four Points Hotel, uh, Kitty Corner to the site. So with that perspective, uh, one should be looking at whether uh indoor open space. Would indeed be a benefit for the communities, for all members of the community. Uh, staff also noted that the strong, uh, stormwater treatments via swales, baylands. Uh, should not be counted, cannot be counted uh towards open space, the required open space uh requirements. Common open space for residential, residential use that is being shown at the ground level. Uh, facing the park will need to be demarcated from the public park in its design. The plans at this point, they are preliminary, preliminary, but do call out for lawn features in various spaces, in various open spaces. And the applicant is advised to use bay friendly landscape guidelines as they develop their landscape plans. Uh, a key comment from Alameda County Fire was then is the need for a twenty foot separation between the parking garage and the office tower. Uh, bridge connection between the two buildings are uh however acceptable. So even with this separation requirement, uh, the proposed common open space on the roof of the garage for employees is possible. Through a bridge connection between the two buildings at the seventh level. Uh, the building division had provided some comments in writing that basically highlights certain uh building code issues and requirements regarding the elevator. Uh, that the applicant should be uh looking at. Uh, it was also noted that all proposed glazing uh will need to be, will need to be world friendly in accordance with. Uh, world safe building standards in our uh regulations. In terms of the next steps, uh, uh, the applicant will be asked to hold a community meeting. Uh, then they, and then the project will be reviewed by various committees such as B P A. Uh, Parks and Recreation Committee as well as the Housing Committee. Uh, additional uh planning commission study sessions are also anticipated. In the meantime, an environmental document, document for C P A compliance. Will be prepared once the project description and site circulation are finalized. So in terms of questions for the commission, uh, the first one is, is the commission satisfied? With the proposed mix of uses, ninety eight residential units, uh, about four thousand six hundred. Four hu- four hundred and sixty four thousand square feet of research and development uh slash office space. Uh, parking, uh, does the commission agree that the applicant needs to provide analysis that would allow commission to make findings? For providing parking, uh, which is more than the allowed maximum. Uh, in terms of the open space, uh, does the commission support additional open space as one way of obtaining uh bonus points for this project? If yes, does the commission think that the open space in the lobby of the research and development uh office building is appropriate? If no, does the commission think public improvements is potentially an appropriate category? Uh, does the commission have any concerns with the proposed heights of two hundred and thirty feet for the. R and D tower and hundred and twenty three feet for the residential tower? And uh, as the commission uh listens to the various design. Uh, of the building by the applicant's presentation, if you have any comments at this stage. Uh, and if you have any uh recommendations uh for the public park programming, uh, we would be welcoming uh that as well. So that concludes my presentation, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions. And as I, as I mentioned, applicant also has a, a presentation.
Very good, thank you, Maru, very well done. Uh, we will run down the list of commissioners and see if there are any questions, um, Commissioner Simon.
No questions for me at this time, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner's up, go.
Same for me, no questions at this time, thank you, Maru.
Commissioner Jake.
Thanks, Maru, for the great presentation, um, three quick questions. Um, first of all, is there any solar required on the buildings through existing codes, do you know?
Uh, no.
Okay, great, and then, um, you mentioned public improvements as one way of um earning additional bonus points. Um, are there any specific public improvements that staff had in mind at this time?
No, not at this mind, uh, but uh Public Works staff has always commented that a we, a lot of number of improvements would be needed. We all know how tricky this intersection is. Uh, but since the applicant has proposed two different categories. So we have not as, at this point, identified uh various public improvements. But we would certainly bring it back to the commission if the commission is interested in finding out what. Staff considers uh public improvements to be appropriate in this area.
Okay, great, thank you, and I realize the last one may actually be more for the applicant. I was wondering if the parking garage is nine stories or six stories, I think I've heard. Two different figures, or I may have just gotten it mixed up.
Totally, it's nine.
Nine, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
I just have a quick question, uh, do you know what is uh the use on the roof for the R and D building and the residential building? Or something that the design business answered?
Uh, at this point, uh, they are not proposing anything on the R and D building. Typically, R and D buildings on the roof is occupied by um equipment. And so it's rarely used for amenity space. But at this, uh, the, you know, the plans are very preliminary at this point, but they are not, unlike the parking garage. Proposing anything on the R and D uh roof.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
First, Chairman Gose.
Um, yeah, I have a few quick questions, um. Is this, has this been reviewed or is it going to be reviewed by the B P A committee? Um, I'm just curious if, if, you know, that, if that's been looked at by them. Like, I think if I'm not mistaken, there's, there's a plan to have some kind of bicycle connection uh through the site.
So, yeah, so the uh, the B P A will certainly be looking at it. Uh, that would be the next step, uh, so. Like I'd mentioned, the next step is community meeting and there'll be a view by B P A. As well as parks and uh recreation committee and housing committee, so yes, that is coming. Uh, in terms of uh the bike path, I think I just mentioned that the A, A T P, the active transportation uh. Plan that is currently being developed by the city, uh, that they are considering a north-south. Uh, a bicycle path that will connect along the freeway between, from the sixty fourth street to Powell Street. And that was noted by staff that uh this is coming and uh, so this is an opportunity of. To make sure that there is room so that the site uh allows space for that connection to be made.
Okay, great, that's, that's good to hear, um, and then also, um. On the, the popo access, the indoor one, um. Can you explain a little bit more what the plan is for that, um? Is it, is it a public outdoor space, but it's indoors, um, can you just elaborate a little bit more on that?
Okay.
Maru, Maru, I don't want to interrupt it, I think maybe the projects will describe that a little more in detail.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Do you think that's appropriate, Maru, because I think they would want to do that.
Uh, I mean, I can, I won't go into the design because, you know, they are going to show you how it's going to look like, but I, uh, if you don't mind, uh, Chair Keller. Uh, I just addressed the other part of the question that the Commissioner Mendez mentioned. So, so what they are proposing inside the lobby, and it's a huge lobby. Uh, is open popos, open space. And it will be open uh to all members of the public and it is obviously it will be enclosed, it is indoor. So, so you can term it as privately, you know, popos. However, in terms of the count of different types of open spaces. This open space inside the building, they are request, they are proposing in order to get bonus points. Because they need bonus point, they need fifty bonus points for community benefits. So the way they are proposing to get those fifty bonus points is thirty five points. Through provision of this open space inside the building and also uh under the overhang of the parking garage. And that is what they are proposing inside the building, the stat, and and that's different from. Uh, the open space on top of the roof of the parking garage, which I said it was common open space. And that's meant for the employees and that is required.
Okay.
So what they are, so what they are proposing inside the building is not required. They are proposing it in order to obtain the bonus points.
Okay.
And bonus points can be obtained by a different, many different ways. And, and one of them is additional open space and that's what they are proposing, they're, they've chosen that.
Great, thank you so much for that explanation, that, that clarifies uh my question. Um, and I think that's it, I think my other questions that I have are probably better for the applicant. Thank you, Maru.
Very good, thank you, and I don't have any questions at the time. So we can move on to the applicant's.
All right, I will go ahead and.
All right, I will go ahead and promote, I have six people to promote. Hopefully I can do this fairly expeditiously. Okay, hopefully they should be here in just a second. Mark and Ofer, are we missing any of your team?
Oh, we're all here, thank you.
Okay.
All right, great, well, I'll kick it off, first, just wanted to thank Maru for her report and thank you. Charlie and the commissioners for your time to review the Christie project tonight. I'm Ofer Zaire with Oxford Properties Group. And we're very excited to meet with you to discuss the opportunity we see to transform the current site. Into a vibrant mixed-use life science and residential project. Oxford is the real estate arm of Omer's, a Canadian pension fund representing more than half a million local government employees. And as such, we always look beyond the asset to truly engage and collaborate with the communities where we invest. So just like we're doing with the public market project, One Block to the East. We've spent considerable time and effort looking for ways for this development opportunity to benefit the Emeryville community. First, given the visibility of this site. We've endeavored to deliver a world-class design that can serve as a gateway to Emeryville. Second, we want to provide a mixed-use destination that both meshes with and enhances the existing community. The city has been clear in its desire for additional housing. And we are planning to deliver a substantial residential building totaling a hundred and thirty four thousand square feet and almost a hundred units. In addition, as you'll see in the team's presentation, we have focused on the open space and are providing well above the base amounts that are required. We have provided a combination of indoor and outdoor space at grade to maximize the area's value and utilization. We've also pushed the vehicular circulation to the perimeter of the site. To further augment the usage of the open space and for the safety of occupants, pedestrians and bicyclists. We've layered in landscaping throughout the project to enhance the health and wellbeing and wellbeing of the users of the space. And to connect the project to the, to Emeryville's network of green space. All in all, and as you'll see in the design team's presentation. We think we are proposing a mixed-use project that will flourish with the addition of new residential life science space. And deliver substantial benefits to the city and the community. And we look forward to your feedback. I'll now hand the mic to Mark Stephan with CCRP to discuss the project's connection to Emeryville, thank you.
Thanks, Ofer, good evening commissioners, Charlie and Maru. I'm the president of City Center Realty Partners. We've been the developers of the Emeryville Public Market for the last nine years. We're excited now to be involved in the development of fifty eight oh one Christie. At Public Market, we demonstrated our understanding of the importance of connection, access and community benefits. And I want to stress that we will bring the same commitment and attention to detail to this project. We want to ensure that the project supports the connection of pedestrians and bikes to the rest of Emeryville. The Public Market Food Hall and Amtrick, just to name a few. We understand the pressing need for housing in Emeryville. That is why we're presenting a project that is using the creation of R and D space to economically support the maximum amount of housing that is feasible. We have seen how our creation of Christie Park has brought the community together. We are proposing a park that is over an acre at the front door of fifty eight oh one Christie. We are certain that we can design this park in such a way that it will be as beloved and is used as often as Christie Park. We look forward to working with the commissioners, the community and future community meetings to bring this project to fruition. I would now like to introduce Peter Buffington of Smith Group, our design architect, to provide a bit more detail as to how the pieces come together. Peter?
Thanks, Mark. Hi, I'm Peter and it's great to be here this evening. I'm going to share a brief overview of the project design, I'm going to start with our project values. We're looking at the development of an icon at the gateway of Emeryville. We're looking at producing a project that will complement the skyline, that will produce public open space at street level. Will bring a mixed use to the community and provide connections in a walkable area, also provide a transit-centric project. The outdoor workplace and indoor-outdoor spaces are going to be very vital to the growth of this building. And sustainable building design along with naturally daylight interiors and net zero energy residential are all integral. The three program elements include the Research and Development Building, the parking garage, the residential building and outdoor workplace at the garage roof garden. And a public park and open space at Christie Avenue. The site is organized around two simple ideas, one is to isolate the vehicle circulation from the pedestrian, creating a tranquil project center. The building placement is organized to embrace the park, protecting it from the freeway, bay winds and vehicles. Creating a meditative experience at the project heart. To achieve the required bonus points for a height and density increase, our project will utilize a combination of affordable housing, additional open space. And a net zero residential building. For the open space calculations, in summary, our cumulative open space exceeds the required area. And is distributed with commercial open space at the garage roof. A one-half acre public park at Christie Avenue. A publicly accessible open space in and around the Research and Development Public Lobby. And a residential park site open space collectively, these will produce. Over an acre of human scaled urban outdoor spaces engaging and inviting tenants, residents and the community to enjoy our project. Our buildings, and this is the Christie Avenue frontage, are organized around the public park with an inviting street frontage. As providing public engagement is a project focus. Promoting a walkable district, this open space creates a notable stop as one moves around the city, walking or biking from park to park. The Christie massing elements of the project woven into the project is a green parking garage. Protecting the residential from the freeway as the zoning code does not allow housing next to the freeway. When residential or research and development is stacked on top of a garage, structural considerations, vibration, materials and construction types create serious inefficiencies. The garage will utilize integral planters on many levels to provide planting and balance the greenery with required ventilation. Producing a delicate and porous facade. The upper roof garden is a wind buffeted outdoor workplace for a research and development tenants, creating a great spot for scientific inspiration. The Research and Development Building enclosure or wrinkle allows daylight variation is responsive to the site governed by energy while also producing. A memorable form visible from all around the bay. The project materials balance transparency for this natural daylight. And a range of earth and our natural colors inspired by historic built fabric throughout Emeryville. The residential building will include a glass fiber reinforced concrete and window wall facade. While the Research and Development Building will include a unitized curtain wall system organized around the building massing. Which includes a building base and a building top, which we've, we've started to call the wrinkle. The public open space lobby will include high ceilings and a transparent wall with large upperbll doors providing an engaging public space protected from the elements. In opposition to traditional green walls, which are planted vertically, we're proposing a series of planters which support growth. Across the garage even on the upper levels. Our expectation is that these vines will realistically grow only about two floors high. So our screen wall will be limited by planter placement and garage ventilation requirements. With the landscape not shown for clarity here, public lobby is integral to the park and open space concept. It provides an accessible, protected area to enjoy the park setting during sunny rainy or maybe foggy days. It serves as an informal gathering place to meet, share lunch or just enjoy coffee with the protection of a highly transparent. And spatially expansive indoor park space. The community space shown to the left is a wonderful outdoor focused space along the base of the garage. This creates a community meeting area for recreation, birthday parties or even as a gallery space. It spills comfortably into the adjacent park. We've included just one example of how a building lobby may be utilized as a public open space during the daytime. This project, which is now the LinkedIn headquarters in San Francisco at Second and Howard Street. Includes a coffee shop, a set of bleachers. And a series of permanent working tables where the public can enjoy lunch or even have a casual business meeting. It's actually a really great space. To the next slide. This project endeavors to balance a range of scales with building elements. Each tied together at street level through pedestrian walks and a very elegant public park. The giant wrinkle of the Research and Development Building responds to the urban scale with a simple metaphor. While the garage is rooted in a balance of transportation and nature. The residential facade is metered to a more human scale with a rhythm that is much smaller. And now I will pass the presentation on to Ben Huey, our traffic engineer, so he can review a little bit about our site access.
Thanks Peter, just wanted to make a couple of clarifications and respond to comments from the City Public Works. Regarding vehicle circulation and so looking at the, the top blue arrow, just the northeastern driveway. That's actually going to be our, considered our primary vehicle entry. We're estimating that majority of the vehicles entering the site will be coming from northbound Christie Avenue. And so they can make a northbound left turn into the site there and will be also at a protected left turn signal. Which should help with vehicle safety. There will be no vehicle exit and so I think the, the city may have been concerned with site distance issues exiting that driveway, but it's going to be an inter-only access. And then a little bit further to the south is our pedestrian scramble that we're proposing. This is to provide a higher level of pedestrian safety as pedestrians will have their own phase to traverse that intersection. And it'll connect this project on the west side to the east side of Christie Avenue. And as the city commented, the operations will be reviewed in the traffic impact analysis. And but our preliminary traffic analysis shows that there should be minimal queuing issues at this intersection. And lastly, at the southeastern corner is our vehicle exit. This access will only be right turns in and right turns out, will be no left turns in. And this will be prohibited using traffic delineators along Christie Avenue. And this next slide kind of shows how that, that's going to look, it's going to be. Traffic delineators and within the median or within the center of the Christie Avenue and you can see in the top right corner. There's the plastic delineators to prevent vehicles from crossing that. And so next, David Walker from PWPLA is going to talk about landscape.
Hi, thank you for your time this evening and letting me briefly describe the landscape for this important Emeryville site. My name is David Walker and I'm a design partner with PWP Landscape Architecture located just down the road in Berkeley. I would like to start by discussing the important ideas for the landscape design. First, a beautiful tree-lined perimeter road to separate automobiles and free up the pedestrian connections to the park. From all the proposed buildings that surround it. At the center, a more than one acre continuous park plus. The interior popos of the Research and Development Building and the community garage space. Which are intended to be seamless and transparent from inside to outside, providing generous all-weather public space to the park experience. The park is divided into two important spaces separated by a stone seat wall lined pathway. And hedgerow of columnar poplars. A large public lawn with a stage and pavilion serve as a focal point that is highly visible and faces outward towards Christie Street. And the other part of the park is a more intimate space that faces the building popos, which contains the Bayland Gardens. An immersive and interpretive garden habitat with diverse plantings that attract birds and pollinators, revealing this unique site's position on San Francisco Bay. On top of the garage is a large roof garden which contains meeting spaces for outdoor work. Opened lawn and trees with views to the bay and the East Bay hills. A bioswale garden with, which cleans the stormwater falling on the Research and Development Building roof. And most importantly, a pine forest for wind mitigation protecting from the strong southwestern summer winds. In this section, you can see all the parts of the project and how they compose together. The perimeter drive on the left and right side of the section shows how windrows of columnar poplars will be planted. Which will greatly moderate the adjacent property views. Similar to the columnar poplars we planted at Chiron and Navardis on Hollis Street two decades ago. Here you can see a before and after view at the south edge of the site where there is currently no visual boundary. Between the gas station and Denny's. The additional, the addition of poplar trees will close the, will close the off-site view, creating a beautiful green wall of trees. We've tried to extend the Christie Avenue Park north and south to make it feel like it faces the entire eastern perimeter along Christie Avenue. Especially wrapping around the Research and Development Building popos to the right. A cross-section of the park with green wall and garage popos on the left opens up to Christie Street to the right. You can see the diagonal line of poplars that divides the two park environments. The Christie Avenue sidewalk shown on the right conforms to the Emeryville guidelines of fifteen foot of clear open space. With an eight-foot sidewalk adjacent to the street, which will maximize the size of the green park facing the street. This bird's eye perspective highlights the large public activity lawn welcoming visitors from the street. With the, with the park pavilion as its focal point. All of the proposed building edges beyond are activated with public building uses. On the left, the residential terrace and clipped hedge faces the park with its unique brick treatment. Creating a strong spatial threshold to the park. And now let's take a look from my level at the residential terrace. A view from the residential terrace at the southeastern corner of the building with a clipped hedge as a strong demarcation connects the public activity lawn beyond. Going the wrong way, I think. Moving west along the residential terrace, the hedge opens up to create a yoga and activity lawn dedicated to the building residents. Moving further west along the residential terrace and looking north. The two parts of the park are revealed with the Bayland Gardens on one side adjacent to the garage popos. And the Research and Development Building popos beyond. On the right side of the columnar poplar hedgerow is the open space, the open public activity lawn and staged pavilion. Moving back out towards Christie Avenue, the large public activity lawn has adequate space for small performances, public gatherings and daily passive use. The Research and Development Building popos on the right is open, transparent and welcoming. This view demonstrates the indoor-outdoor relationship of the Research and Development Building Lobby. With radial paving moving seamlessly from inside to out. And the dynamic geometry of the columnar poplar hedgerows in the middle of the view that divides the two park environments. A circular green wall at the center of the lobby on the right. Contains a public cafe and a living room, public living room that is inviting to all regardless of inclement weather. The Bayland Gardens are a beautiful natural habitat representative of the site's unique position on San Francisco Bay. The Christie Avenue site is literally located within the coastal saltwater edge habitat. And these images show the beautiful natural character that remains in many of the, in many areas of the bay. The Bayland Gardens are an opportunity to create an immersive and interpretive experience for the public. That evokes a special layered meaning to this place. Plant biodiversity will attract birds and pollinators into the natural habitat. This detailed cross-section describes the transition between the Bayland Gardens and the public activity lawn. The bioswale planting is intended to be about three feet tall with irrigation poles set at eye level emitting a fog-like spread. The bioswale will be created with a level depression, and we will minimize the typical engineered drainage overflow structures, so they won't be visible. This is a closer view looking east across the Bayland Gardens to the pavilion beyond the poplar hedgerow. The irrigation heads mounted on five-foot-tall poles throughout the garden will be timed for intermittent mist sprays evocative of San Francisco Bay area fog. In our water-conscious state, this is intended to be irrigation on display disguised as a fountain. The tables and chairs on the terrace to the right are adjacent to a garden environment that creates some intimacy, separating the large open public activity lawn beyond. And finally, I'll end with this image, which emphasizes that the park has been integrated with all of the adjacent building edges to create a dynamic urban interface that maximizes public use inside and out of this mixed-use development. And that's the end of my presentation. I'd like to, we can move on to questions and answers.
Thank you much. Okay, well, check and see if any of the commissioners have questions of applicants. Commissioner Chee.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair Keller. Thank you so much for the presentation and thank you for meeting with me a few days ago to go through this. I do have a few questions. The first one is, I was wondering if you could say a little bit about how you arrived at the ratio of R&amp;D space versus housing for this site?
Sure, I can speak to that. I mean, we recognize the importance of housing to the city of Emeryville, so we really focused on really emphasizing the housing, getting and maximizing the housing. Lining up with, you know, a high-rise, 12-story residential residential building. And that's really, we pushed that component of the project as much as we could while, you know, ultimately the R&amp;D, the R&amp;D is what helps support the housing. And beyond that, it's just not economically feasible to go beyond what we proposed here.
Okay, thank you. And then, it was mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that this is a transit-rich area and that the project would sort of interact with transit. So that was mentioned once at the beginning, but I didn't really get a sense of how that comes into the project design. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure, I could touch on that a little bit. The idea here is that the project is really centered on the pedestrian and the bicycle traffic, so that people can connect to the street. And the park itself is really such a frontage that it's, it's a draw. Obviously, there's proximity to the train station, so we're aware of what that requires. And then, I think also, from a parking standpoint, I know that's kind of the big question here is, how do we manage that? And I could drag maybe Mark into this conversation just a little bit and Ofer, but I think the parking really allows the project to be competitive amongst all the other projects.
Sure, I can touch on that.
Yeah, please.
I mean, first of all, just in terms of transit connectivity, our thought is, again, to make sure that we connect the various bike paths and pedestrian paths through this project to a bus stop that was mentioned by staff. We're willing to accommodate that, want to accommodate that. But also facilitate access to the public market. We have Emery Go-Round stops as well as the Amtrak trains. So we're cognizant of the connectivity required and we want to make sure that that happens and allows for other modes of transit beyond the automobile transit. We also are going to have a pretty aggressive transportation management program to decrease parking demand. But I'll speak a little bit to the parking as well. In a transit overlay district, as Maru mentioned, the project is to have 50% of the minimum parking ratio plus 10%. So for our project here, that would equate to 561 parking spaces. We're asking for 748 parking spaces. If we were to say one parking space allocated per residential unit, that would be 98 parking spaces. That would leave us 650 spaces devoted to the life science or R&amp;D project. And that would equate to 1.4 parking spaces per thousand square feet. And that's considerably below the demand of 1.6 parking space per thousand square feet that our consultant Nelson Nygaard has projected for R&amp;D demand. It is also considerably, it is considerably below the demand that we see currently at the public market, and it's below our competition at Biomed and Wareham. Tenants in the marketplace are asking for two parking spaces per thousand. And we are concerned that if we were to allocate just 497 spaces, which would be called for if we met the 50% reduction plus 10%, would give us a ratio of 1.07 parking spaces per thousand in a R&amp;D project. And we think that this would be a definite challenge for us to try to lease this building. We know there are over 3 million square feet of R&amp;D space that's coming online in the next three years in Berkeley and Emeryville alone. And we need to be competitive if this project is going to be successful, both in its own right and to support the residential. So otherwise, R&amp;D tenants will go elsewhere. So we want to, we want to be mindful of parking and the focus on transit and on pedestrian and bike traffic. And we're more than willing to reduce below the code minimum, but we need some leeway here to be able to make these buildings competitive. So again, they can be successful and therefore can support the residential.
Thank you. Okay. And then my next question is just a small, kind of fine question. So if someone's coming southbound on Christie, I think there was a question about the northern driveway, would they be allowed to make a right turn into the northern driveway?
As Ben was kind of horn, if passenger car can make that right turn, likely though, it would be much easier for them to make the right turn at the southeastern portion of the site, because that's closer to the parking garage, but they can't make it. Trucks will not be able to make that southbound right at the northern driveway, because that turn would be too difficult to make, so they'll be forced to use the southeastern driveway.
And did you have any response to that? I think the staff report had some concern about the angle for that right turn, so like in terms of sight lines.
Yeah, I guess I interpreted their comments to be more regarding outbound traffic, because I think it was assumed it was two-way traffic, but it's going to be inbound. With outbound traffic, yeah, the side distance for that would be limited, but we're not proposing outbound traffic at the northeastern driveway.
Okay, great. And then, next question is the rooftop garden that's proposed on the parking garage. Has there been any thought about the sound from the freeway? And you talked a little bit about wind protection, but yeah, just in terms of like sound and sort of conduciveness to being outside and working there.
Yeah, trees don't offer a whole lot of sound mitigation, but I think, you know, sound travels generally in straight direct. The majority of the sound travels in a straight line. So being up on that roof, you're not going to feel like you're, like you're right, it's not going to be as bad as standing right next to the highway, because you're protected by the edge of the building. And I think that's, that's the best we can do.
I would just jump into that too, David. So Zoe, our, we have a wind study that's underway, and we also have an acoustic consultant who's going to be helping us. And it's likely that as those studies are developed, we'll look at a way to create a very simple wind and acoustic buffer along the boundary. That, you know, you're quite a bit above the freeway, but I think you're right. There's going to be obviously bay wind, but there will probably be some sound from the freeway. So we'll look at ways to mitigate that and make that a really pleasant outdoor. I'm sure David's going to make something really great up there, so.
Trees do a lot, a lot to break up the wind. And our preliminary understanding is that the summer, spring, summer winds are strongest from the southwest. And so the trees are located in that position. I think people will spend less time in the winter when the winds are coming from the north around the top of the lab. So we're really protecting for the better times of the year to try to increase the time that people can occupy that space comfortably.
Okay, great. And then, I think the last question for now is on the mist irrigation heads. I'm just kind of curious about that as a watering mechanism. Doesn't a lot of the water evaporate before it hits or soaks into the ground if it's located up that high?
Yeah, we first thought about mist, and you've probably seen these misting jets that really create real fog, right? What we're actually talking about is like an irrigation head where the droplets are larger. But irrigation heads come in all kinds of different spray configurations. So we're not really putting water out into the, you know, it's not going to drift away. It's going to, it's going to fall down onto the ground. So it's not quite like fog, but it'll, it'll create, it'll be evocative of fog. And our intent is that, we've talked, we've had initial talks with our irrigation consultant, and he says that this is a perfectly reasonable way to put water onto these plants. And if we can, if we can extend the time that it's visible, like for instance, if it's on for 10 minutes every hour during the morning up until the lunch period, and then maybe it comes on at the end of the day, when people would notice it the most. You know, 10 minutes every hour, so that there's some animation happening out here, and it becomes noticeable, so that it creates more of a kind of fountain effect. Our experience of building fountains around the Bay Area for Silicon Valley clients is not very good these days because of the water requirements in California. It's pretty hard to build a fountain these days.
Great, thank you. That's the end of my questions for now.
Thank you. Very tremendous.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I do have just two questions. My first question is, has there been a sun study done? And if so, can you share what the results of that were? You know, with the exposure of the sun to the park area, is it going to be mostly in shade during the day? I'm asking because, just wondering, what are the hours where I would, where it's prime time to be out there to catch the sun?
Sure, sure. That's a great question. And we have done an initial solar study and looked at, you know, the shadow cast. And we're happy to share that. I think it's very, it's pretty informal, but we do that as part of our sort of energy study. So it's an important part of the design process, and yeah, we'll be happy to share that. And I think, and David, you could jump in on this too, but the garden, the park area, you know, midday during the summer, the sun's going to be pretty high, so you'll have limited shadow. But, you know, certainly in the morning, there's going to be a lot of sunshine any time of year in this park. And then in the late afternoons, obviously, you'll get a shadow cast across the park to a certain degree. And we think it'll be really beautiful, actually.
Redrings.
We'll wait to see the fog, too.
These redrings are accurate to mostly, you know, in the mid-morning, when the sun's coming from the, from the east. And so there is, there is some shadow cast by the residential building. And, but we can, we can get into, we can show you seasonally how that all falls.
Yeah, that would be great. And then my second question is, have you considered providing like a shuttle service infrastructure within the project to help reduce the number of parking spaces? I know a lot of R&amp;D companies do this. Genentech being one of the larger companies that does this in South San Francisco, and it's been pretty successful for them. Is that considered or is that already incorporated in the project?
You know, I can speak to that. That'll be part of our transportation management program. You know, we've, we will, over the public market, we're supporters of the Emery Go-Round, and we'll look at ways to either provide a direct shuttle from here or to tie it together to the Emery Go-Round. But that, those measures will be important in, in meeting the demand for transportation. So we will actively look into that.
Thank you. Those are my only questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Dran.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I think this is a path we want to see other projects to go with mixing the residential and the R&amp;D places. The only thing I see on the general plan, I see that we want to double our housing units while the jobs, we just want to like increase it 40%. But the proposed project, I think, is the opposite of that direction. I just want to see what is your point of view on that? And also the scale of the project in the, like, how big is the R&amp;D compared to the residential units in the building? First question.
Great. So the R&amp;D building is about 464,000 square feet. The residential building is 134,000 square feet. I believe the math is somewhere, either 78% to 22% or 79 to 21%. But ultimately, the project has to work together. And so what we've tried to do is maximize the residential, but have it, the project still be economically feasible. And so the residential, then we've ended up with what we think is a significant investment in residential with a high-rise building. But it's really, we've really tried to maximize the amount of residential that this project can support.
Thank you so much. So I don't understand the, when you said the residential things are not like a good business model to make money, I guess these are rental units, right?
Yes.
So I just want to understand better why it's not feasible on a business side to have the residential units. That's, there is, I'm asking, we are like seeing that you're minimizing it. Can you explain it to me to understand it better?
Sure. I mean, it's just, it's purely a function of revenues relative to cost. The cost of the residential building, especially a high-rise residential building, it's very expensive. And once you factor in the affordable component and all the rest, it's just, it's a very challenging, it's very challenging just economically. And so the R&amp;D effectively helps support the ability for us to provide the residential.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And my other question is more about the skyline. Can you have that framed? I didn't see it in the proposed agenda, but the frame that shows the skyline.
Don't think we have that. Peter, we have anything we can show?
I think I've seen it on mirrors.
Yeah, I showed that. I'm happy to, I'm happy to send that to you if you want, or did you want to see it now?
I just want to talk about it now, if it's possible.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's not, I can, we can do things same. I know it's late. Is the 11:00 PM still 11:00 PM or?
It'll be 11:30, so we'll make it slightly by 11:15. We still have public comment to enter into and then our commissioner comment.
Okay, perfect.
So do you want to see that elevation now?
If it's not possible, if I can go to the next question.
They'd have to close this. Maru would have the openers.
Okay, I think I got to ask aside again. Everybody talks to people if necessary, and we need to come back to that. I have a feeling that this residential units, you're spending a really good amount of time on the R&amp;D. That's beautiful. I know these are like preliminary, but it seems like the residential units are afterthoughts or kind of addition. Are we going to see some kind of like more interesting elevations or forms or something like that? Or this is what you're going to propose for future?
Well, I would say that we are early in the design process. You know, one of the things that's important for this project, and it goes back to the, you know, the iconography or creating something that's memorable on the skyline. We also want to make a project that is, has a presence in 10 and 20 years, which is really strong. We don't want to make something that will be a fad or a sort of trend, but something that has a lot of clarity and presence. And the way the balance between the two buildings is happening is the R&amp;D building has a little more activity, a little more operation happening in the facade and the characteristics. And the residential building is more of a straight. You know, so if you had a comedy team, it'd be these two different characters. And it's, it's also, you know, a matter of working with the garage building and that park and sort of creating a way to embrace it. The buildings, as we went through the design process, found that they sort of found a natural home in these locations. As we created this loop road and that core sort of park, the buildings kind of landed where they landed. And honestly, I don't know how many schemes we looked at, but different organizations on the site, this, this seemed to really kind of check all the boxes for. this, this seemed to really kind of check all the boxes for the building and site organization. So it was, yeah, it was, I don't think it was an afterthought. It was really integral to the design all along the way.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. And my other question is the, can we have the model, the physical model you made? Actually, those are very nice looking ones.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Glad you like it. You know, I know that the physical models have a lot more presence in person. But we felt like these photos, and this is a, this model is about a 16th of an inch equals a foot. So I don't know, it might probably fit on your desk, but it's a good size and you can get a lot of detail. And it's also allowed us to study a lot of iterations, too.
Right, right.
It's a good tool.
So you have, you have one that, the other one that has the top view from the roof. If we can go to that one.
The roof garden thing.
I have some comments about the solar panels. Because I think that site has the best view to the city, San Francisco. And for the residents over there, I think the people who have a common space in the R and D, they're going to be happy. But people who are the residence building and the only units that have the view to the city, they're going to see a massive solar panel. Do you think we can relocate that or that's the only place we can put it?
Well, one of the challenges of this project is to achieve dense zero energy for the residential building. And to do that, we need to get as close to 25,000 square feet of photovoltaic panels, which this is about, I think about 15. And then on top of the residential building is another 10. So there's a lot of photovoltaic. And in order to really deliver that net zero, that's one of the requirements. This, this, at this point in the design, this is the best location for that PV because it's south and it allows you to kind of angle and get really good sunlight. So it's super efficient. And if we could find a better place for it, then we'd move it. But this is, you know, and we looked at lots of different alternatives, but this one seemed to be kind of the best location for really harvesting that sunlight.
Just one more thing about the, sorry, about the panels is that they're set down one level lower. So they're not, they're not encroaching above the roof garden level. So they're not really as forward as you might think. They're set down.
Yeah, if you look at that little photo, yeah. Let's see, there is one model photo that shows it. It's a good question because it is a very large element. Yeah, you can see here that, you don't actually see the PVs because they're, they're sloped just slightly. And they kind of come up and meet the edge of that roof garden. So you get a really good sense of where that is.
Okay, perfect. And can you remind me of what's, what we have on the roof of the residential building?
The roof of the residential, the very, very top is actually all photovoltaic. But the area that's kind of in between, there will be some equipment in there. And there's a small area, a small roof deck area for the tenants.
Okay, I see. So that's the?
Actually, I think you see some tiny people up there.
Yeah, that's a common space for a residential, right? That's going to be nice. Yeah, it's all around, right?
I think it's going to be either in one of the corners, probably on the, right now the people are on the right-hand side. I think that we're going to move them over to the left-hand side.
Okay, that's awesome. And the last question is for the landscape. I see very nice trees. How many years? We need to wait.
Not, not very many if we, if we give them good soil and good conditions to grow. Things grow quickly and we'll plant, I think a lot of the trees that we like to plant are fast-growing trees.
The ones that you have rendering or a model on the straight side, those could be very nice, but for me, well, I think, yeah, it is this. This is going to be nice, but the question is like, how many years we should really? Will we see them soon?
Sorry, I was going to point these out in particular because these are the same trees that we planted at Chiron in Novartis back in 1993. And you know what those look like now? They're towering. They're super fast growing. They're phyto remediation species, so it'll help clean the earth below. But they will, they will perform really quickly. In fact, the smaller you plant them, the faster they grow, which is what our arborists always tell us. Plant big ones, but plant small ones. They'll outpace the larger ones that you plant. So I think, I think these will perform really, really quite well if we give them good soil.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you.
May Commissioner Zepplin?
Any questions? Very lovely presentation. Actually, most of my comments have been said, but I actually also kind of have some concerns about the trees. They are beautiful and it's not so much like they're not growing, it's that they're growing really fast. And like, just even like over the last couple of weeks where the wind has been kind of crazy, like I've seen tons of trees being knocked into buildings. Is that like a concern here, given how many trees that you have, especially in that common area space?
Well, you either like the trees or you don't.
No, I love them. Don't get me wrong. I'm all about, all about the air quality, all about the green.
I think your concern is, do you have any, you have any concern of the trees blowing over and causing damage to the buildings?
That's literally it, yeah. It's like, I'm worried about just like the, like even the costs and the walk, like, it just seems like it's beautiful, but it could be difficult just in terms of the layout. Is that a concern?
This park is about an acre, more than an acre in the green, open space. There's really not that many trees on this land. If you look at the park, there's, you know, the open lawn area to the, to the left of the stage, there's what, four or five trees? It's not huge.
Okay.
I think we'll, we'll, we'll study that. And it all depends on the species, of course.
And it sounds like you, like in your prior comment, after Commissioner Dram had mentioned his comments, like it sounds like you are working with an arborist to kind of ensure that that meets your overall vision, right?
Oh, we always do that for all our projects, yeah.
All right. Well, then other than that, I think all of the other comments that I had had worried me in, in the interest of expediency. Thank you so much for your presentation. It was lovely.
Thank you. Commissioner Simons?
Thank you, Chair Keller. I'll be brief here, just a couple of brief comments. One, I really liked that the?
Henry, are you, are you making comments or do you have a question? We're still in a question.
Oh, so children question mode. Oh, my God. Wow, okay. No questions for me. Thanks so much.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry to cut you off. I have no questions either. So in the essence of expediency, I'm going to open a comment period. Has there been any comments?
We, I have received several comment cards, several online speaker cards. And we also have three raised hands among the attendees, so I'll call them. First, first one is Rod Henme.
Hi, this is Rod Henme. I'm an Emeryville resident and design director at HKIT Architects. First off, I want to talk about the traffic. I believe the current scheme does not work. Heading north on Christie is the primary direction. And as I said, you can't turn left at the South Drive. But the North Drive that you're showing, there's only a two-car queue until the stoplight there. And that, those cars frequently back up further north and block that turn lane. Or if the cars are turning there, they will block the intersection. Also, Christie Avenue goes from two lanes down to one lane, right at that place that you're turning into the site. So I know there's a negative impact on the park, but I feel the only way this project should be allowed to proceed is if the central drive proposed by the staff is provided. And that's the only workable solution because even then, it's a problematic intersection because of the short distance from Powell Street. Even then, it may not, it's, it's really difficult. The second point that I would like to make is about the height and the impact on properties to the north, particularly the residence of Christie Avenue Commons, which is where I live, which is less than 200 feet to the north. It's just north of the office building that's shown on your plan. Our loft building relies on top light because the front windows are only 48 square feet with 128 square feet of skylights. So a building of 230 feet located slightly southwest will cast long shadows during the winter months. And I think the building is too tall or masked poorly on the site and request that the staff ask for alternative masking studies and require shadow studies for each afternoon hour in the winter and its impact on our building. And the last thing is on the public park in the lobby. I think the lobby as a public space is problematic unless it's very clear, accessible and recognizable, which I think is shown in your drawings that it is at this point. But I'm always concerned about value engineering in these phases where, for example, you're showing a large operable wall. And that's necessary to make it feel public. And so if it does go ahead as the public space, I would ask the commission to condition that the operable wall be required, that a cafe or similar public activation space also be required. And finally, that there be seven-day access, since weekends are the best time for public use. And that would, would be important to define the hours. And finally, in terms of process, I ask that the community meetings that residents within 1,000-foot radius of the site be notified by mail so we can be sure to be able to attend. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, next speaker is Lisa Findley. Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for being here so late. So I'm a resident of the Christie Avenue Commons as well, just north of the proposed project. As some of you may remember on the commission, given my assertive comments in the past, I'm a professor of architecture. So I just mentioned this to lend some context to my comments. First, I want to say it's great to see the excellent design team that the developers assembled for this project. Some of the best our area have to offer, which is great. I have several concerns, some of them echoed by other people through questions or comments. One has to do with the traffic circulation. I just echo Rod's comment about that. And agree that the proposal by the city staff seems the only way to safely enter and exit that site in a way that will not completely tangle traffic. Number two, in terms of the housing project, as Commissioner Dram has observed, while the biotech building is carefully designed, as is the garage, the housing project seems kind of underdeveloped and uninspiring. It would be great to see the capable architects work on that. The housing location, for health reasons, the state of California recommends that housing be at least 300 feet from any gas station. Of course, this housing is right on top of the 76 station on the corner and is less than 100 yards from one of the busiest intersections in the Bay Area. And I just asked everybody here, would you want you and your family to live on the third floor unit on the southeast corner of that building? From an environmental justice point of view, the placement of this building, the housing building, I think, is just plain wrong. And I would suggest an investigation of it on the north side of the site where it's away from the cars, away from the benzene pollution, the gas station, closer to other residential buildings in town, as well as the public market and the current public park. I also have some concerns about the public space indicated on the plan, the indoor space, the fact that all the edges of the buildings are also colored green. I think that really needs to be carefully looked at and assessed. I also worry about the main central public spaces' availability to sun, as one of the commissioners suggested, and that I think we need shadow studies of that shown very clearly. Certainly have some questions about the site density and how public benefit is seen and developed here and would urge the design team and the developer to look at other ways of contributing to our community.
As the speaker's three minutes.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker?
The next speaker is David L. Go ahead, please. Oh. Allowed to talk is not available because David L. is using an older version of Zoom. Choose promote to panelist. Oh, all right. Guess I have to promote him to a panelist to allow him to talk. All right, David L., can you hear me? And can you speak?
You're on mute, David. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. The main point I wanted to bring up is the building that's directly to the north of the proposed site. And just, I would like to know more about down the road, the demolition phase of the Emery Bay Cafe building along with the Allegro Ballroom, as that has a very close proximity to that building, as well as then the later construction phases and how that'll impact the occupants of that building during their working hours, particularly thinking that that building doesn't have air conditioning. So much of the ventilation is used through open windows and dust and noise accumulation and pollution that could occur during those phases. And also, just the thought of the largest building in the proposed project being placed just adjacent to that north building and how that will impact the occupants of that building. And to keep it concise, that is just my only question, primarily focusing on the demolition and construction phases.
Okay, thank you very much. And Charlie, you have speaker cards?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so before you get on the speaker cards, it's 11:18. Shall we see if the commission wants to finish this item off tonight or continue it to another time?
I would just note, well, I would just note that you have very full agendas for your next several meetings.
Yeah, we just have the, our own comments after the three speaker cards. So I'm willing to try to finish it off.
Yeah, I think we're close enough to, to the end that we can go power through it.
Okay, is there anyone that doesn't wish to do that? Well, please, then let's go ahead and continue. Thank you.
All right. So there was one email that you all received from John S., John Sherman. And then I have three online speaker cards, which I will read. The first one is anonymous. This person did not provide any contact information, so I have no idea who this is. Emeryville has several available housing sites on Christie Avenue and Shellmount Avenue, which are in much more desirable locations, not in a high-traffic corner as this new proposal. In addition, the potential danger and liability of being directly next to a gas station was never mentioned in the review. The proposed R and D center is a building not needed in Emeryville as there are several available and new under-construction facilities. For example, these include several sites in the 6,400 block of Christie. The renovations occurring now on Horton, old Sherwin-Williams buildings. A new facility being built behind the Novartis buildings. The buildings proposed near the public market. This new proposed site on Christie would not be ideal for an R and D site as it is on a highly busy intersection, faces the freeway, and according to plans, would be subject to potential loss of trade secrets and intellectual property. Being an ex-R and D executive, there would be no way I would want a company in the proposed building. The current building site, unknown intention, at the intersection of Christie and 65th, has been stalled for several months and the reasons should be explained to add potential information possibly relevant to this proposal. The vacant site on Shellmount between the Powell Overpass and Bay Street would have been a more ideal site for this proposal. That concludes that comment. The next one is from Bobby Lee. He says, "Hi, Charlie. I would appreciate if you could read the following questions, comments into the record. One, who is the pull, who is the bus pullout for, AC Transit or Emery Go Round? If it's for the Emery Go Round, please engage with the ETMA on a discussion early on, for a discussion early on." Since the, two, since the ONI application on this same site has been withdrawn, has the property owner made any additional attempt to contact the ownership of the 76 gas station or the Denny's restaurants to gauge their interest in selling their property? Taking ownership of the entire Christie-Powell corner opens up so many more opportunities for more robust development with?" for more robust development with an eye on improving circulation. Three, it's kind of weird to have a park facing a three-way major intersection, Shellmount Way. Not sure about the way to resolve this issue, but it just doesn't seem like a comfortable experience for park users. Four, please consider making the residential units an ownership housing opportunity, not rental. More ownership opportunities, especially two and three bedroom ownership units are sorely needed in Emeryville. Thank you. And then the last one, oh, Lisa Findley already spoke, so I will not read her online comment card.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Any emails?
Uh, let me double check my email. I have not received any more online comment cards, and I do not see any further raised hands among the attendees.
Very good. We will close the comment period and bring this back to the commission. Is there any commissioner with a burning desire to go first? Raise your hand or continue to call us. Okay, Mr. Chase, you look interested in saying something.
Do I? 11:23. Oh, no, thanks for running this meeting so efficiently, Chair Keller. So I'm going to try and keep it quick. I'm going to go through the the questions or the prompts that the staff put down. And again, I want to emphasize that I really appreciate both the staff presentation and the the project proponents' presentation. The staff report, I thought, contained a lot of really, really valuable information. And I'll point out a few things that I agreed strongly with. I feel really mixed about this this proposal. I understand the reasons that it looks the way it does right now. And I also think that a lot of the criticisms that were raised today and in public comments through email were really, really valid. And so I feel like I you know, I want to think about it more. I want to see what the applicant comes back with again afterwards, and I also want to hear the rest of the comments made today. So saying that, mix of uses, great to see 98 residential units. I completely agree that it'd be wonderful if some of them or all of them were for sale rather than rentals. And I think that probably all of us on the commission would like to see more rather than less residential here. Maybe not here, but just in general. And so again, I'm curious to hear other commissioners' thoughts, but definitely more residential would be preferable. In terms of parking, in theory, I like the idea of separating the vehicle traffic and the parking from the park area. But I also really, really understand the need to break up the block and to provide a safe way into the site. So again, feel very mixed about this. It's concerning to me that the bike parking wasn't really shown or built out yet because what that indicates to me is that the project proponents mainly have vehicle traffic on their mind right now. Instead of thinking about bicycle circulation and the logistics of using bicycles within this site and arriving by bicycle and accommodating that. And so I would like to definitely see more information about that in the future. Let's see. I really want to agree with the staff comments about the parking garage being designed to be adaptable so that it could be converted into commercial or residential uses when parking demand is reduced over time. One of the public comments that we received had a proposal about putting the parking garage as kind of spread out throughout the buildings as a podium underneath. And I was wondering if the applicants in their future plans could maybe think about the rationale or the potential use of placing the parking kind of throughout rather than in one separate garage and how that could be adapted in the future more or less easily for other uses. So I'd love to have a response to that eventually. In terms of the open space, I think it's really special that there is a park proposed here of a good half acre plus size. Being on the Parks Commission as well, this is really, really important to our community to have more park space. The, you know, I feel like the residential space on the ground level is kind of, you know, opens up to the public park, which has its own benefits, but as has been pointed out by others, I think the the only people that get sort of the big views from open space are from the commercial side. And so that's another sort of equity balance thing that we need to think through. There was a comment made about connectivity to future active travel throughout the site, and this to me is one of the most important things to address. I think there's a new active transportation plan coming out that would look for more connectivity to the west side of the project. There's also the Ashby Interchange project coming too, and I think there's going to be a really important corridor there. And so I would like to see the project kind of designed around taking that into account more than it is right now. I don't have any particular concerns about height. And then I wanted to support the bus stop recommendation made by staff. And then I also wanted to say to Professor Findley, thank you so much for pointing out about the gas station proximity. It's something that I honestly didn't even think about, the proximity to residential, and I think it's a really, really important consideration. So I will stop there.
Very good. Thank you so much. Now, Mr. Dram?
Okay, so I'll go through this question very quickly. For the first portion that the mixes, this is a pay we want to see, but I think the ratios should be different. What I, what we see in general plan, we need more residential. And either we should like have, see something like triple on the amount of the units, residential units, or half of the R and D place to be toward the general plan. The parking, I think it's good to have the review for see if that much parking is needed or not. For residential, one parking is good minimum, but more than that, I think is doesn't add any value. The open space, I think that's going to be a very valuable part of the project. Because those kind of spaces can be used anytime during the day in any condition and they're very comfortable spaces. Especially with the nice interior designs that I'm sure this group can take care of that. About the height, I think that the buildings are disturbing the skyline. We need to have some study about that and think through it. And the design and other issues, the only thing is the residential units needs to be either relocated or move around and pay more attention to it, maybe by flipping it. I don't know how it works, but it's something that I'm sure the designers can take care of it. I just tried to be very quick. It's a lot, it'll be late at night right now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Zappco?
Nothing more from me, thanks.
So, vice chairman, there?
Um, yeah, I'll try to be super quick. I know Commissioner Chase and Commissioner Dram already mentioned some of my comments. So I'll just mention the ones that are like super important to me. And for me, the open space right outside, it looks like it's catered a little bit more to the corporate commercial building instead of the people that are going to be using it, which is probably going to be the residential families there. I would like it to be maybe a little bit more geared towards families. If you look up down the street at Christie Park, the big attractions there are the whale play structure, which gets used all the time by by families and kids. And also the unofficial dog park, which kind of was just a large open space, but now it has become a dog park and a meeting area for a lot of people with with pets and also kids. So considering that you're going to have a residential component within this space, I would really consider maybe rethinking that a little bit and just gearing it a little bit more towards family. Then the rooftop is kind of like your corporate open space, that's what I'm seeing on here. And then also, I also agree with one of the comments that Professor Findley, I believe, said that, you know, you place the residential building close to the the gas station, which is kind of like the most undesirable place. So if maybe it could be rethought and replaced somewhere else, it may be more adjacent to where there are residential homes to the north of the building. That would be really great. And I think also another comment that Commissioner Chase said, where we, if we were able to maybe spread out the parking and have it have, right now, what I've seen is you have three separate buildings, right? Instead of it being kind of one developed site. So I would like to see them a little bit more integrated. I know you did mention that it gets a little bit more difficult, especially with R and D buildings, but it can be done, has been done. With many of the buildings where you have parking structure at the bottom and you have R and D at the top, and the same for residential. And also just, I would like for you just to look at this intersection a little bit better with the traffic here, and it just doesn't seem like it flows right. I I drive through here coming home and I'm always on alert because there's always cars that are just stopping abruptly. And so with with a site this big and bringing in so many people, I can definitely see that being a larger issue. But those are my only comments that I have. Thank you.
You. Mr. Savin?
Excellent. Thanks, Chair Keller. I just have a couple of brief comments here. First, I want to start off with that I really, really like the large park, that all the public open space is in one place and that it separates from traffic. I think it would be a real community space that people use. Like other commissioners, I'm concerned that this project, even though this project includes housing, the day it opens, the city's housing balance will be worse and not better. I understand the market pressure you face and that it's challenging to wait for conditions to change. I actually like having the public open space and the park separated, sheltered from the highway. My building has a roof deck and we're way, way further from the highway than this project is. And I still find the traffic noise noticeable and annoying, so I think getting the public away from that is a great idea. I'm skeptical of the open space in the lobby of the biotech building, but I think this is really a problem for the commission to solve. We need to develop a list of priorities for indoor public open space because developers come to us pitching that, and I think we're all often a little bit skeptical. So I'd really like to hear about your experience programming these spaces and research you've done with other groups who might like to use it. I think we'd all want to avoid, you know, an aspirational lobby that never really gets used and then the public is, you know, locked out on a lot of bonus points. I'm hoping that's something we can discuss in the future. Thanks so much.
Wow, that's very concise. Thank you. Have I missed anyone? Okay, so I guess it's my turn. I agree with everything each commissioner said. I think this is a very problematic site. I think you did a very good job on the park. I like it very much. I think the programming, the way everything is combined is. I just wish it was somewhere else. I think this project has to start with access and the access has to come with the intersection between Shellmount Way and Christie Avenue. There's no better way to get into this project than that, and there's no better way to control it because this is a very constrained intersection and it's never going to get any better, especially if you're adding another 750 cars. So I think that needs to be looked at. I think the housing being next to the gas station is problematic. The thing that really strikes me is here you have a 12-story building and no one that lives there gets to look at the city or the Bay Bridge. It's all facing north and east and the garage gets all the views. So I really think it's problematic. I think the parking, I think, is too high. I know you guys have to consider the market values, but I keep saying that every new developer that comes to us is, we have to create a new paradigm. We have to quit using the old paradigm. That cars are the primary source, that we have to consider them first, and this is what people who rent these spaces want. The thing is labs operate on different timeframes, and so everyone is not going to come into this lab leaving at 5 o'clock or 8 o'clock in the morning and leave at 5 o'clock at night. You're going to have people on weekends, you're going to have people here at night. I think it's been staggered. So I'm not convinced that in this day and age, we need to allow parking that is on an archaic metric in which, in how we figure this. So it's got a lot of problems, as discussed when we met in person. I think it's a problem, the project is too dense and I don't mean, I mean, to me, density is a two-part factor. I mean, I want to see more housing. I don't mind this footage. It's just, everything is shoehorned and jammed and this place looks very constrained and very tight. And I think it might be because you have three buildings. I don't know that the green walls work. And you're going to really have to convince us. I, in this, just because of time, I'm not going to share with you the images that I have, but we have two buildings here in town where we have promised green walls. The walls are not green. You guys showed in one of your images, the Ellington condominium complex in Oakland, and the building looks worse now than the image that you showed. So I am not convinced green walls work and I'd like to see some other alternatives. But I'm going to turn you really on it and suggest one thing. I think this problem, this project needs to be scrapped as it is shown. I think you need to do one of two things is create a parking podium, even though it's difficult to do for life sciences. The warm buildings are buildings on parking. You need to do a four or five story parking structure that covers more of the property and put your buildings on top of that. Residential more views. I even have a more side splitting suggestion, and it's going to require that you work with the city on this because I believe we should remove the residential component out of this altogether. And the way you do that is you guys as a company have two entitled projects. One is a lab building on parcel B, and one is an apartment building on parcel A that would provide us 167 units of housing. That is more than what this combined has, and if you combine your 18 low-income places you're supposed to be at the public market, you scrap both these projects. You build your entitled apartment building that's 167 units. You build the biotech building on parcel B and you do biotech here. I think we could have a win-win all around. And you guys have shovel-ready projects you can start. And it would take the approval of the commission, but we can do the findings and we do not have to do mixed use of housing. And I think that is probably your better way to go because this site is weight-constrained and getting in and out of it is going to be very difficult. So I think I've talked to the city people about, we have to stop designing in silos. We need to make our development projects work within the neighborhood. And I think if we took this out of its silo, put the biotech here, do housing where it's approved and entitled, get rid of biotech, and we'd have a win-win all around. So basically, I have a lot more I could say, but I think with the lateness of the evening, I think we just need to redo this project to something that I mean, I think the park is great. I understand what you're doing with your buildings. I just think it's way too problematic. Housing has no views of the bay. It's next to a gas station. It's too hard to get 750 cars into this site, and I just think we could do better. Well, those are all my comments, and if there's any questions or any other comments, I'd be happy to entertain them. Otherwise, seeing that, shall we close this item and move on to commissioner comments? I thank you guys. I think you did a real good job. You worked hard on this. I think you just have a very, very complicated person here. Okay, Charlie should be moved to.
Sounds like, sounds like Mr. Stefan might want to say.
I was just going to thank, thank the commission and staff for considering our project, and we'll take all your thoughts and comments into consideration and come, and come back to you hopefully soon.
Thank you.
All right, if you're closing this item, I will let Commissioner Gietzani know that he can come back.
Okay.
All right, I have texted him to that effect. If he hasn't gone to bed yet. Meanwhile, I will escort our visitors out back to the attendee room.
There's Jack. Okay, while Charlie is doing that, I will open it up to commission comments. Does anyone have? Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make? Uh, we, Mr. Chae?
I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Simon's comment about indoor popos and potentially, you know, considering how we treat those proposals. I don't know, I'm not sure what the process would be for that, but I just wanted to raise it as something that I thought would be a good discussion to have.
I agree, we can't do it tonight, because it's not agendaized, but Charlie is, is this something you guys are seeing a lot more of, is it something we should agendaize to really address to how these would operate? Because in talking to them about this, they even wanna open it on the weekends, so that's a problem for me, but I think we need to agendaize this and try to hash out what we'd like to see as a proposal, or when proposals come to us.
Well, let me think about that a little bit, but I, I will say that we have not really seen other proposals similar to this recently that I'm aware of. So I think this is kind of the first time that we've seen somebody who wanted to, to get bonus points from having open space indoors, and actually, I probably shouldn't say too much more about it, since we're not on this agenda item anymore, but I, I will say perhaps you can, it is addressed in the design guidelines, and perhaps you can flesh this out further in your future deliberations about this project.
Or is it something that just doesn't come up often enough that we can really deliberate on when it comes to us, such as this did?
Well, it doesn't come up, it hasn't come up in the past, that I'm aware of.
But we're concerned that it might, and really don't have a direction which we...
We can, we can agendaize this for a future study session if you wish, although I would suggest you do that after we get through this next series of mission meetings that are very, have very full agendas.
Yeah, let's, let's put that in our back pocket, and if something comes up, maybe, you know, we'll consider talking about it, but yeah, let's put it on the agenda for when we're not so busy.
And if I can just add one more thing to that, on the Parks Committee, we've been talking about signage in general and wayfinding related to popos, which I think could be greatly improved, so that might be a, another thing to add to that agenda.
Add it to the agenda, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Design open space in general?
Yeah. Alrighty, if there is nothing else, we will adjourn our meeting at 11:44, and thank you everyone for your hard work and patience in dealing with this.
Right. Thank you everybody.
Have a good day, have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Have a good night, bye.